A couple of minutes. Okay. It is nine oh one AM and we will get this meeting started. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for August sixth, twenty twenty four. Please take a moment to silence your cellphone so that we don't have any interruptions. And if you wish to address the board during public comment, please sign in at the table at the back by the door, or if you're online, please indicate in the chat that you are interested in speaking. You'll come up to the front table. The microphones are on when the light, the top of the mic shines red. And you need to keep that mic fairly close to you in order to be heard in the room. And other than that, I don't think I have any other announcements at this time. So we will move on and head into our first item of business, which is our proclamation. Oh, thank you. We will make introductions. I'm Zan Ojo. I'm board chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Nancy Croney, County Council.
Rachel McInney, County Administrator.
And we usually do a round of introductions in the room. So we will begin over here with Christine Mosbaugh.
A.C. Malo, Community Health Centers Executive Director.
Jim?
Sheriff Towne, Benton County resident.
Karen Norris, Benton County resident.
Rick Rager, Assistant County Administrator.
Ray Wood, county deputy, Benton County State Officer.
Joel Geier, North Benton County resident.
Robert Orton, whistleblower formerly with Republic Services at Coffin Butte landfill.
In the front row.
I'm Marcy Follett. I'm a, yeah, I'm a Polk and Benton County resident. I live on County Line and my family's been here since before the World War Two.
Virginia Scott, Scott, North Benton County resident.
Rep, Republic Services.
George Richardson, Director of Public Affairs.
Julie Jackson, Municipal Manager of Public Services.
Ian McNabb, Republic Services.
Russell, County Councilor.
April Hall, county.
Bailey Payne, Benton County Commissioner.
I'm aware of the Republican House.
I'm running Benton County.
I'm from Benton County.
Ryan Orton, Benton County.
Thank you all. With that, we will, oh, online?
Thank you, Commissioner. Jeff N. Arstal, Benton County Sheriff.
Anyone else online?
Lisa Pierce, Benton County resident.
Sorry that we did not catch that.
Lisa Pierce, Benton County resident.
Thank you, Lisa.
Nervy Palmer, North Benton County resident.
Camille Hall, North Benton County.
Amanda Makepeace, Board of Commissioners Administrative Specialist.
Hen Eklund, North Benton County resident.
Eliza Murphy, an independent journalist.
Don Rogers, Under Sheriff.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I can tell I'm rusty from being out of town for a week. We will move on to our proclamation.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here today. We have this proclamation to read about the work that we do in the community health centers, and we just really appreciate your support. For over fifty years, the community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventative health care in our nation's medically underserved communities, delivering value to and having significant impact on America's healthcare system. As the country's largest primary care network, community health centers are the healthcare home for over thirty-one point five million Americans in over fifteen thousand communities across the nation. One in every eleven, and as of new numbers released yesterday, one in every ten Americans in the United States receive their care at community health centers. Community health centers are a critical element of the healthcare system, serving rural, suburban, island, frontier, and urban populations, often providing the only accessible, dependable source of primary care in their communities. Nationwide, community health centers serve one in every five residents in rural areas. Community health centers serve as beacons of essential resources and support in the face of disasters and pandemics, and will continue to respond quickly to care for America's most vulnerable and underserved communities. Every day, community health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services, to provide comprehensive care, allowing each community member to thrive. Health centers have more than doubled their behavioral health workforce in the last decade to meet Americans' growing need for behavioral health services. Community health centers are governed by patient majority boards, ensuring patients are engaged in their healthcare decisions. Community health centers are locally owned and operated small businesses that serve as critical economic engines, helping to power local economies by generating eighty-five billion dollars in economic activity and more than thirty-seven billion dollars in labor income in some of the country's most economically distressed communities. Community health centers nationally support more than five hundred thousand direct and indirect jobs, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician's assistants, licensed family therapists, and certified nurse midwives, who work as part of multidisciplinary clinical teams designed to treat the whole patient. The community health center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance status, improving health outcomes, and reducing healthcare system costs. Community health centers reduce overall costs of care by helping manage patients' chronic conditions, which keeps them out of more expensive healthcare settings like hospital emergency rooms. Community health centers are on the front lines of emerging healthcare crises, providing access to care for our nation's veterans, addressing the opioid epidemic, and responding to public health threats in the wake of natural disasters. Community health centers operate over nine hundred mobile units, providing accessible health services in hundreds of rural and urban communities. National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to celebrate America's more than fourteen hundred community health center organizations with over fifteen thousand service delivery sites, including over thirty-six hundred schools. We honor their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health centers were opened, their doors more than fifty years ago. During National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's community health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's healthcare system. Therefore, let it be proclaimed that August fourth through tenth is Community Health Center Week in Benton County, and all community members are encouraged to join in this observance.
Thank you. And I understand there's going to be a celebration of our own community health center here?
Yes. On Friday, the twenty-third, is that right, the twenty-third of August, we're celebrating our twentieth birthday, and we're really proud of that achievement and happy to be able to celebrate with the community and with our staff.
And the general public will be invited?
Yes, they're welcome to attend. It will be at the C-Three Corvallis.
Community Center?
Senior Center, yeah. Yeah, we're also at the Albany and Corvallis Farmers Markets for the next couple of weekends, sharing information and giving folks an opportunity to ask questions or to learn more about what we do.
Excellent. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the proclamation?
I move to adopt proclamation P. twenty twenty-four, days zero one five, proclaiming August fourth through tenth, twenty twenty-four, as Community Health Center Week in Benton County.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. Happy birthday, health centers. Next up is comments from the public. Thank you. And since we do have many people who would like to speak today, we will be limiting the time to three minutes apiece. The first, first up is Robert Orton.
Hello. Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners, as I stated before, my name is Robert Orton. I'm a whistleblower from Coffin Butte landfill. I was fired one week after my last presentation to you, when I presented you video of active methane leaks on the working face. Later that week, I sent an email regarding contaminated ground that was slated to be blasted and hauled out, and I was fired, again, exactly one week after presenting that to you. You're gonna hear a presentation from Republic Services, and I think it's important for you to know and take note of the fact that Rhett Davis is on record lying regarding issues out there. Ian McNabb lied to the EPA regarding where and what he was testing up there. What you're hearing from these people is entirely self-serving. Now, I've been working with Beyond Toxins. I've been working with Senator Wyden. I've been working with Senator Merkley. I have been working with the Signal Network out of Washington, who assists whistleblowers. It would behoove you to look beyond what they are presenting you and realize that your decisions are going to stay with you. Continuing to greenlight an entity that is interested only in money, only in profiting their investors, not with following through with their mission statement, not with adhering to their environmental compliance issues. You are complicit in that. If you simply look at the superficial presentation that they're going to give you, because it's going to be sugar-coated and rosy, it is not going to give you the facts. I would implore you to take a deeper look at what's going on. There are many, many people who are doing that now. There seems to be a disconnect with some of the commissioners here regarding that. And it's sort of a weird milgram paradigm going on, where Republic has two hundred scientists with lab coats and clipboards saying, "The experiment requires that you continue. If you stop, we'd have to stop the experiment." If you guys are willing to buckle under because people above you green-lighted this, and it's important to remember, some of the people who are green-lighting this, James McCourt, solid waste engineer for DEQ out of Eugene, is an ex-compliance officer with Republic Services. Take a deeper look at what's going on.
Thank you. Next up is Virginia Scott.
Good morning. I'm speaking to you today about methane, lithium batteries, landfill fires, and their costs. Methane is a potent greenhouse gas that has more than eighty times the warming power of carbon dioxide over the first twenty years after it reaches the atmosphere, from the Environmental Defense Fund. Greenhouse gases contribute to global warming. Oregon is attempting to decrease its greenhouse gases, yet we are not moving to eliminate or even reduce the massive methane emissions being released by Coffin Butte. The EPA opened a file on Coffin Butte landfill after local concerns led to inspection on June twenty-two that revealed violations. Senator Merkley said the inspection resulted in recording sixty-one leaks, including three measurements that maxed out the instrumentation that was being used at seventy thousand parts per million. Methane at these concentrations is at an ignitable level. A spark will cause it to explode into flame. That enforcement action is still ongoing. The federal grant that Oregon is currently applying to electric vehicles in order to reduce CO2 emissions will not counter the negative effects of methane emissions with their potent climate-changing effects on our state and the world. The governor has invoked the Emergency Conflagration Act due to current wildfires. These wildfires are exacerbated by the dry environment that is a result of global warming. As we know, the cost of firefighting and the recovery of wildfires is massive and costs lives, like the recent death of single-engine air tanker pilot James Miley Maxwell. In addition, Oregon Health Authority is reporting record numbers of heat-related deaths due to climate change, including fourteen since July fifth of this year. The Climate and Health in Oregon Report for twenty twenty-three reminds us that extreme climate effects continue and that we must build resilience against wildfire, drought, and extreme heat. It seems that reducing methane release would be more effective than building resilience to the effects of methane releases. This methane release is causing loss in human life, environmental losses, fire losses, and expenses, and these are not limited to our country or our county. These effects are cumulative across our state, our neighbor states, and have worldwide implications that often fall on those least able to adapt to them. Coffin Butte catches fire regularly, which consumes firefighting resources that could be used to protect our residents. For example, OPB reported that on July twenty-fourth, firefighters responded to a grass fire near a flare stack that burns off methane gas from the landfill. There are also frequent equipment fires at the landfill, often caused when trash gets inside the engine compartments on the D-nine dozers and packs around the turbos that start to smolder. Now, combine this proclivity to catch fire.
I'm gonna interrupt you and just ask you to wind it up.
So, fire ashes can travel up to five miles, and within that five-mile radius from Coffin Butte encompasses the entire Soap Creek Valley, Adair Village, Lewisburg, Vineyard Mountain, parts of North Albany, Tampico, and Polk County neighbors up past Sufacrossroads, as well as the commercial OSU McDonald and Starker Forests. I think monitoring of methane must be automated, constant, not pre-scheduled, as in a few times per year, and independent of public services. The penalty for failing to address these methane leaks needs to be commensurate with actual cost to health, life, livelihood.
Thank you. And if you would like to share those comments with us, please leave them with Erica Milo, and she can capture the whole. Next is Joel Geier. Morning.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Joel Geier, North Benton County resident. Today, you're being asked to review Republic Services' annual report on their operations in North Benton County, including the landfill. There are a lot of problems with this operation: fire, methane, leak-shaped disposal, union busting, and workplace safety violations, to name a few. There are also indications of groundwater contamination, a subject dear to my heart, not just because I'm a hydrogeologist, but also because my neighbors and my family and I, we all rely on rural wells for our drinking water. This report includes an odd memo written by Ginger Ruff, also known as Ginger Richardson, Republic's Arizona-based manager for Public Affairs, who is here today to present to you. The memo tries to address the issue of arsenic, but it's full of factual errors and misstatements. I don't have the time to go into all of them here, but if you've heard of the book, How to Lie with Statistics, this one has a lot of good examples of that. A prime example is lumping in data that has nothing to do with the issue. This memo tries to claim that arsenic is a common local issue by lumping in Coffin Butte with the southern Willamette Valley. We're in the mid-Willamette Valley here, and we don't have the problems they have at Spencer Butte, for example. The memo also claims that a well referred to as MWS nine, I think that should be nine S, provides baseline data, but it glosses over the fact that this area of this well received leak-shaped seepage for several years from an acknowledged source before it was ever even sampled for arsenic. They also seem to have a manganese problem. There are two compliance boundary wells that increasingly exceed site-specific limits in current, recent years. But you might have a hard time seeing that because they're plotting the data on log-log plots, which are a way to, it may not be intentional, but it's a way that makes it less visible what's going on there. One other way to lie is just to give averages and then claim, make statements about a trend or lack thereof. The memo states that compliance wells have, quote, "stable readings" for the past twenty years, but the data, which they're not presenting here, tell clearly a different story. The wells show fluctuating values, and at least one of them shows an increasing trend. Republic knows they have a problem. They would like for you to make it your problem by accepting this report. You would be much wiser to remand it to them, ask them to delete this memo, and replace it with an honest analysis of the data. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. We will come back to this discussion shortly. Next up is Marcy Follett.
Virginia's gonna help me out. She's gonna hand each of you a piece of paper. And, yeah. So what I have here is, fifty years ago, my grandma presented to the committee that was deciding where to put the dump, and it was supposed to serve, oh, sorry, how about this?
Much better.
All right, fifty years ago, my grandma showed up to tell, to take a stand on the dump. Of course, we lost, but in the papers, you can see all that. And I also have receipts of what somebody else will be talking about, but I've already wasted thirty seconds. So let me get right to it. What you have in front of you is passing around, may not look like it pertains to what we're talking about here today, but it very much does. The discussion we're having has so much more to do than with our dump. The way things are going, so on your papers, you'll see that there's a graph. If you look at that graph, if you have a color, yeah, the paper's colored, the red line is the life expectancy of America, is the red line. And what it shows is that the life expectancy of our children is shorter than ours, and we are the first generation that that's true. That data comes from Kaiser Permanente. And what you have there is Dr. Shiva, who did an analysis on that data, and what he found is that the reason of life expectancies is going down is because the policies that are made by our government are affecting our biology. And he says that we need to look at things systematically. I have one minute to do a systems analysis. minute to do a systems analysis. Basically, there's parts of a system, and you need to figure out how the system works and where those parts of the system lie, what components those are. And are you looking at a system that's working under power, profit, and control? Are you working under a system that's under truth, freedom, and health? So if we look at the way our pioneers dealt with their garbage, they had the input, they had was not very much waste to begin with. It was what was needed to take care of their staples. So they had very little, I have a pioneer dump on my site, and what they were taught back then, the information they were given, another part of the system, is, it said right there in the textbooks, you're supposed to take your waste and put it on the side of the creek. And they did it. And we had an iteration of the cycle. We learned that was not the best thing to do. I think you could all agree to that. Are we glad we're not doing it now? So another cycle came around, and they realized they need to take it to the dump, you know, somewhere. There wasn't a centralized dump, so it was decided, the controller at this situation at that time, so the control was taken out of the hands of the pioneers, someone else is going to decide. So the government got involved, or a committee, and they decided that this is going to be centralized. And the dump, Coffin-Butte, was chosen. And it wasn't the best site, really, based on the paper you have there from my grandma. You know, when they had a flood back then, there used to be water ran off that mountain, okay, little hill, and it doesn't now. But if we get another flood, and they do have 100-year floods, it is very possible that that place will be underwater again, as it was, as she reports there 50 years ago, that they had observed.
Thank you.
I have 47 seconds left.
I think you actually are counting up now, so.
Oh, darn.
You're about a minute over time.
Okay, so if you look at the way it worked, the money ended up on the part of, it's what it took, it was part of the conversion. In order to get rid of our waste material, money is the conversion part. However, when you bring in Republic Systems, their goal is not to get rid of waste. Their goal is not to recycle. Their goal is profit, and that is right for a company. But we should not be dealing with a company, but we are. But we need to make sure that promises that were made were made for good reasons, and we need to make sure they're followed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I could share more of systems with you, because, oh, I do want to say one more thing, and this is concerning the celebration. The fact that we have $85 billion going to healthcare, that we need that much money going to healthcare, and that there's 500,000 jobs, I greatly appreciate everything that you've done, and it is so needed. But the fact that it's needed speaks very loudly to why it's important to make these decisions. It's much more important that we don't have to spend $85 billion on health. So, thanks for being patient.
Next is Kate Harris. And the three-minute clock is right over here, so thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kate Harris, a North Benton County resident, degree in civil engineering. The past month, we've had more than a handful of lightning strike-caused forest fires in Benton County. Information could be obtained from Sheriff Van Der Saul or Chief James, if you would like more details. I spent yesterday at Alsea Falls, including driving by Hubert McBee Campground, which several of you noted as being one of your favorites during a recent meeting. I do hope we never lose pristine parts of our county near Alsea nor in North Benton County. Within the past several months, two fires have started on Republic-owned Coffin-Butte landfill property. And last summer, two wildland fires occurred within a mile or so of the landfill, one just across Wiles Road to the west. Republic has assured us in numerous places that they quickly take action to identify threats to safety, that they act rapidly to prevent catastrophe, and that this is, but this is not what we are experiencing in reality. In the fire risk assessment attachment to the most recent CUP Exhibit 12 dated November 2023, after the previously mentioned wildland fires, Republic states, "The risk is low for wildfires starting off-site to come on-site, and there is no history of wildfires in the area of the landfill." At approximately 7:15 on Saturday, May 18th, a fire on the working face started at the base of and involved the hydraulic lifters. Once the plume of black smoke got large enough, several motorists driving down 99 called it into dispatch. Due to numerous false alarms over the past several years of motorists calling in the methane burn-off stacks, dispatch appears wary of any fire calls near the dump. They query the motorists, which delay response, trying to figure out if it's yet again somebody crying wolf due to the unmasked stacks, which Republic has stated that they would shield from view. Again, per Exhibit 12 of the CUP application, surface fires at the landfill working face are quite common at any landfill. The key is to quickly identify and extinguish working face fires to prevent expansion. Quick reaction ensures minimal risk of the fire expanding. How are they identifying these fires that occur after operating hours? Several weeks ago, a fire was called in by other motorists after hours. Adair was able to quickly extinguish a grass fire at the base of the methane stacks before it proceeded through the very dry, open grass field of the forest, which connects to Peavy, Soap Creek, Starker OSU and McDonald Don Forests, and into Kings Valley. In the KLCC article published yesterday referencing this fire, Republic again reassured us that, quote, "We have robust monitoring and emergency management systems in place to protect employees, the community, and the environment in the event of a fire. That system worked as designed." But I ask again, how are they identifying these fires that occur after operating hours? Also quoted in the CUP Fire Risk Assessment referencing a prior fire in the same location, quote, "Site operators believe there have been, there may have been an ember from the flare that ignited grass. The landfill has since taken the precaution of maintaining a significant gravel-covered buffer between the flare and grassy areas with no chance of ignition. With this improvement, it is believed that a repeat of a fire starting in this manner cannot occur." Republic continues to assure us that they are a good neighbor with the utmost safety in mind, yet they do not have after-hours monitoring or alerting to prevent catastrophe. Why must we continue to rely on motorists on 99 convincing 911 operators that there is indeed an actual fire and not a false alarm yet again in order to get response to the landfill? How many times are we going to give Republic yet another chance to say they're indeed concerned about safety, are a good neighbor, and take responsibility for their actions? Perhaps we've done it enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Carrie Norris.
Can you hear me? Is that, okay?
You might want to put it a little bit closer. Your voice is soft.
All right. I don't have prepared remarks, but I am here because I live within that sort of valley and footprint of Republic. I am a very busy, single mom with a job and a side gardening gig, but I feel like it's important enough for me to take time from all of that to come and talk to you about this as somebody who is impacted currently by the dump and would be with this expansion. I want to, I guess, remind you of your obligation to represent the citizens of Benton County as opposed to concerns for the profitability of a particular company. I am concerned when it comes to the air quality, or what we always in the area call "dump days," which everyone refers to, that I have definitely noticed an increase, and particularly when there are foggy days in the winter. The discussion around the DEQ with the methane leaks, and that does not surprise me, but does very much concern me, and I hope you take very seriously the concerns around water quality. Again, we are all on wells out here, but also frankly, clean drinking water is just at a premium and would be absurd to waste. The egress that this road provides our neighborhood, in particular if there was a fire concern, and now the fire concerns that I was not fully aware of, but really am keenly aware of now, everything is so tinder-dry, and if you do have a fire that starts at the dump and moves up the hill and around, that's our two primary ways out of that little valley, and there are a lot of us back in there. That is very concerning. And frankly, fair play. I have been following this for the last year or so, and it just seems like Republic is not interested in fair play with us. They are not a good neighbor. They are not a good neighbor to anyone in the area, and I think the folks that live closest to it know that and are impacted by it. And I just want to remind you to take that in consideration, again, your obligation to that. Yeah, that's what I had for you.
Thank you. I know that we have at least one person online who wishes to speak, but I don't have the list in front of me.
This is Lisa Pearson. I requested online comment.
Thank you, Lisa. Please.
Yes. So my name is Lisa Pearson. I live about five miles from Coffin-Butte. I live on a single-lane gravel road that is private, that does not have garbage pickup. So I have no choice but to use Coffin-Butte landfill for waste disposal. When Benton County was renegotiating the contract in 2020 with Republic, apparently there was some discussion around limiting the cost to those of us who are self-haulers. The fees for self-hauling used to be around $25. Republic wanted to increase that significantly, and some of the county commissioners, one of whom is still here, pushed back on that and stood up for the rights of those of us who are Benton County residents and said, "We want a flat fee for these people, and for all self-haulers, they shall charge no more than $35." You know, they did get to increase that later to $36.75, which I'm not, that's not my point of contention. On July 27th, I drove my F-350 pickup truck out to the dump, and I dumped 600 pounds of household garbage. I told them at entrance that I was Benton County. When I left the gate and looked at my receipt, which is always more than $36.75, I've never been charged $36.75, even close to that, it said I was a Lynn County resident. And so I went back to the gate, and I told them, "Hey, sorry, you made a mistake. Kara, can you fix my bill?" And they said, "You're not a residential vehicle, so you don't get the Benton County rate." And I said, "Wait, wait, 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 wait. I live five miles from here. This is my F-350 truck. How is this, how do I not get the Benton County rate?" And they told me, "That used to be a U-Haul, and we don't count those as residential vehicles." And I said, "Okay, couple of things. One is, your fee structure here and on your website says nothing about residential vehicles. It just says Benton County flat rate. B, you've charged me the Lynn County rate," right? They proceeded to refuse to speak to me further and help other people, and would not speak to me again. So I left with a card for the dump manager, and I sent an email on July 28th to all the Benton County Commissioners outlining what had happened, okay? And I just said, "Hey, I was charged the Lynn County rate. They refused to do anything about it. You know, can you please look into this?" On Tuesday, July 30th, I called Brock Kindholz, who is the landfill operation manager, and told him what happened, and he told me that Republic charges anyone they deem not a residential vehicle the commercial rate. I asked him what a residential vehicle was and where they define that. He told me that that's up to Republic. I pointed out that that's not on their website, and that, you know, if they have actually been doing that, they've been charging every single OSU student who's ever rented a little U-Haul to haul their garbage over to Coffin-Butte at the end of term, something other than their contracted rate. They have been charging them the commercial rate, simply because they rented a little U-Haul truck.
Thank you, Lisa. We've reached your time, and we are aware of the situation, and definitely.
There are several of us.
Get back to you.
So he hung up on me. Commissioner Pat Mullin, who is the only one who's responding. Sorry.
Thank you.
There are several of us who'd like to speak online.
Sorry, this is Lisa. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I'm not sure how much you got back. But anyway, on Tuesday.
Can I interrupt you, Lisa?
Yes, sorry.
You are now a minute over your time, so I'm going to interrupt and cut you off, but we will get back to you on this matter.
I'm sorry. I did not get my time. I disconnected from the meeting.
I don't think so. We've been listening to you for the past four minutes now, and yes, there was an interruption, but we did hear you.
No, I'm sorry. I literally only read three paragraphs. I'm sorry. I disconnected from the meeting, so if someone's been talking, it was not me.
I'm going to have to ask for verification from our staff about that.
I mean, her box.
I've literally read two paragraphs here.
But you only, you get three minutes.
And your three minutes are up.
Yeah. So you, please, feel free to email us the rest of it that we did not get a chance to hear yet.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online that has indicated they would like to speak?
Yes, I have Camille Hall, and there are several others. We're in the chat since the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you. I don't have access to the chat at this time, so I'm relying on staff to let me know. Camille, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. I'm Camille Hall. I'm a resident of North Benton County. I urge the Board of Commissioners, the staff, and committee members involved in landfill oversight and policy recommendation to drive out and spend a few minutes by Coffin-Butte every week, especially during the ongoing expansion hearing process, as a reminder of the size and scope of activity associated with the landfill. It is located far enough from town to be out of sight, out of mind for most people, but it is a potent force, both visible and invisible, shaping the lives and futures of residents of Benton County and the surrounding counties. At roughly 10% of daily solid waste intake, Benton County is an afterthought in the operation of Coffin-Butte landfill. The residents of Benton County need you to protect and look out for our health and safety, the livability of our communities, and our rights as hosts and customers of Republic Services. We need you to have effective systems and staffing in place to monitor the operations of the landfill and enforce the terms of its agreements. Benton County has a few key inflection points in which to make changes to the operation of Coffin-Butte landfill. This is a major opportunity to encourage and take heed of public concerns in order to correct and clarify the conduct and interpretations of the franchise agreements between Benton County and Republic Services. We are your eyes and ears in the community and should be your partners in securing accountability in the everyday operations. Thank you.
Thank you. And next?
I'll go next. This is Ken Eklund. So, good morning, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ken Eklund, Benton County resident and chair of the Disposal Site Advisory Committee. I'm addressing you remotely today as I have rebound COVID, which is not a good experience. Zero stars. Do not recommend. I'm here addressing the 2023 landfill annual report, which you'll be hearing about from Republic shortly. I sent you an email yesterday, which lays out some problems with that report and lines of inquiry I hope you will pursue with Republic. Right now, I'll just focus on one of those problems, which is, the 2023 landfill annual report that Republic is hoping you'll accept does not mention that throughout 2023, and indeed right up to the present moment, Coffin-Butte landfill has been the subject of an active enforcement effort by the Environmental Protection Agency, following an onsite investigation the EPA made in June of 2022. This enforcement effort focuses on methane leaks at the landfill, landfill gas. When we think of annual reports, we think of corporate annual reports, which have laws governing them. There are certain things that must be disclosed, et cetera. This annual report isn't regulated in that way, obviously. This annual report is only regulated by you, the Board of Commissioners, and by what you accept and what you don't. Let me quote Michael Regan, the EPA's head administrator in public hearings this year, when asked about Coffin-Butte landfill and its landfill gas pollution levels. Quote, "It is an active enforcement situation, so I can't speak to that without betraying the confidence or the legal obligations I have. But I can tell you that we are coordinating with the state of Oregon. It's an active case, and we are laser-focused on this case." The 2023 annual report has a section entitled "Environmental Monitoring," and somehow this isn't in it.
This has been a great public comment period.
"Federal and state action," as I've even mentioned. Of course, the Commissioners remember that this is not the first time that Republic has withheld information from you. The last time Republic appeared before you, Commissioner Ogero determined through questioning that Republic had withheld the EPA investigator's report from the Benton County Tox Trash Effort, even though it was plainly relevant to that process. So basically, the pattern of bad faith is continuing. So I'm hoping that because of bad faith is continuing. So I'm hoping that because of the significant emission, plus all the other concerns that you have and which staff and the public are bringing to you, that you do not accept the 2023 landfill annual report. Send it back to be rewritten, and this time, don't forget the methane. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time today and for listening to the public.
Thank you. Okay, we have, as I understand it, one more person who would like to speak.
I would like to speak. This is Debbie Palmer. I don't know if I'm the last one, but I will just jump right in. Good morning, Commissioners, and apologies if I'm a bit hoarse. I also am getting over a recent bout of COVID. I wish to comment about Republic Services annual report. Mostly, I want to encourage you to reconsider automatically making a motion to accept it per the recommendations and motions in your packet. There are several reasons to think twice about accepting the report as is, but I'll only mention two as my time to speak is limited. Reason one, Republic Services misrepresents its obligation to provide disposal services to Benton County. The annual report states, quote, "An approved CUP would ensure continuity of disposal services. We need to begin permitting and constructing new disposal cells now to ensure continuous, safe, reliable, and affordable disposal of the county's waste." As I understand it, under the county's current franchise agreement with Republic, they already, they are already obligated to provide continuous disposal of the county's waste through the term of the agreement, which is until the year 2040. In reality, there is no rush to approve a CUP. Their entire running out of space argument is a crisis of Republic's own making, because it has nothing to do with providing safe, reliable, and affordable disposal of Benton County's waste, and everything to do with providing high margin profit for themselves at the community's expense by bringing in over 90% of the dump's waste from outside Benton County. Reason number two, methane, methane, methane. Republic Services is misleading you on their methane leakage matter once again. They want to divert your attention from their chronic methane leakage problem by wowing you with the large number of gas wells drilled and by touting all the money they've spent on their gas collection system. But more wells and more money spent does nothing to address what still leaks into the atmosphere and contributes to climate change. Have you stopped for a moment to consider the reason they need so many wells? 25% higher than industry standard, I think they said at one point? The reason is, the Coffin Butte landfill is simply in a terrible location, always has been, always will be. There's nothing they can do about all the rain we get here. In summary, I hope you will begin to see that Republic Services is not the strong partner they wish you to believe they are. Their deeds do not match their words. Please be very cautious moving forward. Read what they write with a critical eye, and listen to what they say with a critical ear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One other individual, Nancy Whitcomb, is having trouble with her microphone, but she did place a comment in the chat, so I'll be sure to preserve that.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, our public comment period is now come to an end, and we will move on into our work session. First item of business is the Republic Services presentation of the 2023 Annual Hauling Report and 2023 Annual Coffin Butte Pacific Region Compost Operational Report from Ginger Richardson, Brett Davis, Ian McNab, and Julie Jackson, and accompanied by Bailey Payne from our staff. I do want to comment that for several years, I was the board liaison to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and the Disposal Site Advisory Committee. The practice of the county was that these reports, and especially the environmental monitoring reports, were reviewed by the Disposal Site Advisory Committee very carefully, with a lot of questions asked, and only then recommended for acceptance by the Board of Commissioners. Since we have just re-established our disposal site advisory committee, and they have only had one meeting, which was largely orientation, although there was a presentation of the report, I don't, the disposal site advisory committee was not able to take formal action to refer that report to the Board of Commissioners, because the meeting had gone over time, and there wasn't enough time for all of the questions that folks had. So personally, my leaning is to hear the report from Republic today, but to leave the record open and not to accept the report until the disposal site advisory committee has had time to actually get their questions answered, and then make a proper referral of that report to the Board of Commissioners.
I agree with that.
Okay. So with that, we will move on to hearing the report from Republic Services. You'll probably hear a couple of questions from us as well, but we will not take action on it today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Administrator McKinn, my name is Ginger Richardson, also Ginger Row, but go by Richardson. I am the Director of Public Affairs for Republic Services. I know we were just here a couple of months ago presenting the 2022 annual reports, and so I'm pleased that we are getting back to our normal reporting schedule. We will start today with Julie Jackson, who you know as our municipal manager. She will present the hauling portion of the report first, and then we will end with the landfill portion. We are pleased to present this to you today. Thank you for giving us the time to do so, and we look forward to answering any questions you may have at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Good morning. I will just give you some highlights from the hauling report, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. So, and in talking about our hauling report, I do want to mention, we are a sustainability company, and one of the things that we've done is to create some goals, our 3030 or 2030 goals. One is to reduce absolute scope, one and two greenhouse gas emissions by 35%. And we are on track to do that. A new sustainability report just came out last week, I believe, and I will send the link to that to staff so that all of you can see that report. The other thing that we're very proud of is that we are creating, we feel like we're creating a circular economy. You're going to hear a lot about circular economy in regards to recycling as the year goes on. We're going to talk a lot about the Oregon Recycling Modernization Act, and Republic Services took that step several years ago to build a polymer center in Las Vegas, where we actually bring in plastics with targeted markets for those to go out and create that circular economy. And then the other thing is to increase beneficial reuse of biogas. So the reuse of the gas at Coffin Butte landfill to put on the grid is a great example. As I said, I'll just go through this really quickly for you. I think typically you've had questions about recycling, and I don't want to forget to talk about that. One of the things at the hauling company that's important to us is the talent that we have at the hauling company, the people who work for us. We have a fairly low turnover rate at the Corvallis Hauling Company. We have well-established drivers who are experienced, who are trained and retrained in safety every single week. They are doing a great job, and I think one of the things that I hear all the time, even from people who may have an issue with something else, is that your drivers are doing a great job. And so I just want to give a tip of the hat to them, because I think they're doing a great job, too. In 2023, we donated more than $46,000 into the local acute community with cash and in-kind services, and you can see a list of some of those entities that we donated to. We do have one person whose job is dedicated to recycling education, Kenny Larson. Most of you have met him, and he spends his days out getting the word out about reduce, reuse, and recycle, in that order. He speaks at schools, he tables events at farmers markets, he has done some online seminars to really just talk to people about what goes in that cart, and he will be very, very busy in the coming year talking about the recycling modernization act, because you're going to see a lot of change in the way we recycle in Oregon. It's really the first substantive change that we've seen in many years, and we're very proud of that. You'll see some pictures of people and our local team. I won't go over the names and addresses of those folks. There's financial data, and feel free to ask questions if you have them. There's a page titled Recycling Waste and Waste Reduction, where you can see a three-year, year-over-year average of recycling of the different commodities. You can see in 2023 that we are about the same as in 2022. Recycling was higher in 2021. We attribute a lot of increased tonages in 2021 to COVID. People were at home, they were ordering online. There was a lot of cardboard in the carts that we saw and beside the carts. So we attribute a lot of it to that, and you can see we're pretty flat year-over-year. I would anticipate, maybe not in 2025, because recycling modernization begins July 1, 2025, but I would anticipate in 2025, going into 2026, that you're going to see some increased recycling tons, because there are new materials being added to the cart, and new materials that will be recycled. You can see that yard debris is up higher. That's, and it's always been called yard debris on this chart, so we didn't change it, but that really is mixed organics. As you're probably aware, every citizen in Benton County who has service with us has the ability to have weekly organics carts, so they can compost food waste as well as their yard debris. Glass going down a little bit, we see, we've seen that. That's a trend. There's less glass out there. One of the things to watch for is that wine and spirit bottles are being talked about at a state level to go into the bottle bill. They will either have to go into the bottle bill or join one of the producer responsibility organizations, which is another term you're going to hear a lot about, through the recycling modernization act. So we think a lot of glass at the curb will go away, and I would expect that number to go down. I'll go to food waste. You can see there's an increase in food waste. We have a voluntary commercial food waste program, so we do have a program for commercial users to include all their food waste, but it is voluntary. There's some talk at the Corvallis City level about changing that program somehow to encourage more food waste collection, and we know that that's one of the materials we really want to get out of the landfill and into the compost. So I think you'll see some increased focus on that from a state level, and also from a local level as well. Scrap metal, scrap metal has everything to do with the cost of metal. If metal prices are high, people sell their own metal. If metal prices are low, they bring it to us. So that fluctuates with the market. And so as we go down this list, you can see that the tons recycled in 2023, 25,744, are higher than 2022, which was 24,164. The other thing that's a little disheartening is that Benton County is making more waste that goes to the landfill as well. So 45,920 tons is higher than 2022 and higher than 2023. So that's the trend that we're seeing right now in waste. No questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
The 2030 sustainability goals that you present are corporate goals at the national level, correct?
They are.
Yes. Okay, so some of those goals may be much more achievable at other landfill sites than they are at Coffin Butte, per se. And so those goals sound great. They sound really lofty, but I'm a little bit, can, can we achieve a 35% reduction in greenhouse gases here?
I think that's the goal, Commissioner. And, you know, one of the things that we need to point out is that across the country, many landfills are just now putting in gas collection systems. Coffin Butte has been doing it for a very long time, and so we often don't get credit for that. I always say it's our best kept secret, because we've been doing it for a long time, where they're just being instituted across the country and other places. But we certainly are looking at that landfill gas, looking at the best possible uses for that. And the other thing that we're doing is, we, we really believe that electrifying our fleets is the answer to reducing emissions from trucks. And we weren't successful in getting that done in Corvallis last year, but you will see, maybe this month, electric trucks arriving in Salem as a pilot, a couple of electric trucks in Bend and in the Portland market. And we're very excited about those electric vehicles. There, there are an awful lot of benefits from those. So that's just another way that we think we can get the job done locally.
Thank you.
Sure. And then.
There are other questions.
Yeah, oh, sure, sorry. I just wanted to piggyback off of what Commissioner Ojero said, because I had a similar question. I would be interested in seeing the data specifically for our area on how you are meeting those goals or working towards them.
Sure.
And then I also wanted to mention, you mentioned your drivers, and I do hear good things about your drivers. And one example was a little boy in Monroe, who is so excited to always see the garbage and recycling coming, and recently heard that the driver gave him his own little garbage truck. So that, that was very sweet.
I just saw the pictures from that, and, and we always get a smile from that. I will mention, too, that Monroe is a community that just decided, you may not know this, but they had weekly trash service, and they had recycling once a week, and they had no organics collection. And that had been for quite a while. But we worked with them in the past year, and they now have weekly recycling and weekly organics, along with their recycle, their trash collection. And we think those are great ways to start to capture some more material for recovery rather than landfill, even in the little communities.
Actually, there was one other thing I wanted to mention, which is just a bigger issue for our community as a whole. In Corvallis, the majority of rental multifamily housing does not have yard debris, or compost bins, or even glass recycling. So I hope that that's something that we can address in our SMMP or in some way in the near future.
Yeah, I, I do think, we hope that you address that as well in the SMMP, because those services are available to all multi, and I think at a state level, we're calling it multi-tenant now. So it could be a living situation, it could be a situation with multiple commercial customers, but multi-tenant facilities. When we instituted the organics collection to include food waste, we worked with the city of Corvallis to say, for every, say, two to four yard dumpster, they would get one organics collection cart as well, and that's available to anybody who has trash services. Glass is also available at all of those facilities. The problem is, the way the system works, the property management, the owner of the facility, the owner of the account, often has those services removed because they're so contaminated. And, you know, this is not a problem in Benton County. This is a problem in the United States, and certainly across Oregon. I can tell you that multi-tenant recycling and waste recovery is a major focus of the recycling modernization act. It's not the first step, January or July 1, 2026, but it's a very soon actor. So we're already at a state level with DEU talking about those kinds of things and how to encourage it. You know, residential service is the low-hanging fruit, and multi-tenant, I will tell you, is not easy. It's very difficult, because you get 10 people in a complex who want to do a really good job and one who doesn't, and, and that can be a problem. So there are a lot of people at a lot higher levels working on that, and we are working with them and following along, and we will institute any systems that we can make work in Benton County. But it is available to everyone. I just also.
There's one more question.
One more question. Sorry, I'm not looking up.
Yep, sorry. You talked about the recovery rates in Benton County, and I'm used to Benton County at least being average with the state, if not, not above. Could you talk a little bit about why Benton County isn't doing as well as statewide average?
You know, it's a head scratcher for me, too. Nothing materially has changed statewide in the last five years or so. That's why recycling modernization is so important. So to see that trend going down in Benton County, we don't understand either. We do know during COVID, we weren't able to get out there and do table at farmers markets and be in the schools and those kinds of things. But I can't really attribute it just to that. to that. The answer is no one knows. Recovery has gone down statewide. It's, we're not as high as the rest of the state. You can see, there's a chart in your packet that I put in and you can see that statewide that went up again, but, but it also was trending down statewide. So you know, what I can say is I think we have a great opportunity to increase that now because just like when the China Sword Initiative happened, people were really listening. They, they knew something had changed. They knew there was material that was, you know, ending up on riverbanks in Asian markets. And so they were listening and they wanted to do better than that. I think we have that same opportunity to get people to listen during RMA and, and that will be our goal to work on that in the coming year. That's really our number one goal for education and outreach is to get that RMA word out. New materials, for example, larger plastic items, larger metal items will be able to go into the cart. Everything as large as a five gallon bucket will be able to go into the cart. We're not sure about the logistical issues with our trucks and that, but we're going to follow the rules and put everything into the cart. As you, I think you're aware, there will be a statewide list of what can be recycled and it'll be the same here as every place else. I'm going to give you the caveat that that's with the exception of the Portland metro market because they don't want to play by the statewide list and they'd like to add more material. But the rest of the state is looking at where there are actually responsible markets for that material to create that circularity and get those materials in a useful environment. So statewide list should be the same everywhere and it'll be our focus in the coming year. Has been for a year or two really, but more so this coming year.
Okay. I guess my theme is what can we do to keep materials out of the landfill? And this may be more for your colleagues, but I know there's been discussions for several years about construction debris, which is something like 15 or 20% of what goes into Coffin Butte. And it just seems like that we should be able to do better with that. And especially having OSU here and a lot of construction on campus, let alone the rest of the county. I would really like to see a proposal for getting Benton County to do a better job of keeping many things out of the landfill. But I think construction debris may be the low hanging fruit of what's out there.
We don't disagree with that. And I'll let Brett and Ginger talk about that a little bit, but I will tell you that many of the loads from Oregon State, especially if the building is going after a LEED certification, a lot of those loads are hauled to a facility that can do the construction sorting for them. So there is some action being taken, but I, we agree with you, there's, there's more possible.
Well, which means it's a longer haul and.
It is.
Maybe it should be.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And, and I've ended with just the Benton County haulers report that we submit to DEQ every year. I will tell you that, to be aware, this is not everything recycled in Benton County. It's everything that we recycle in Benton County. And there are other recyclers that play into that recovery rate. That we aren't necessarily aware of that data. DEQ doesn't share with us.
So the recovery rate for Benton County includes the efforts of other recyclers such as First Alternative and others?
Well, First Alternatives Depot, we operate that depot.
Okay.
But there are businesses and industries that have other sources where they recycle. If they report to DEQ, it's included in here.
Like Bertram's?
Bertram's is a great example. Yeah. Report.
Thank you.
Sure. And that's really all I have for the hauling report unless you have other questions for me.
Actually more distressing to know that Bertram's is included and still the metal recycling rate is so low. Thank you. We'll move on.
Brett and Ian are going to take the lead on presenting our annual report for the landfill. We do have a slide presentation. Do you have, do you have that? We have, we, we presented this slide presentation at the disposal site advisory committees meeting last week. And so we, you have the actual report as it exists in front of you. And then we also have included some additional information. So we wanted to give you the same information that we gave to DSAC last week, although I recognize that you're waiting on their report. Before we get started, I do want to clarify one thing. First, when we were here in February to present the 2022 report, obviously we did pledge increased transparency, being cognizant that we need to be aggressive in our efforts to make the community aware of what's going on at the landfill and you, the commissioners in the county as well. As it relates to any EPA enforcement at the landfill, that is not in the report because the report was submitted to you just prior to the first of our three community meetings in support of our CUP application. Michael, EPA Administrator Michael Reagan apparently made his remarks in a hearing on May 1st, I believe it was in DC. We were not aware of that hearing at the time that we submitted the report. In fact, we were not aware that there might be the possibility of an enforcement action against the landfill until we were notified by a field representative on June 28th, following the first of our community meetings. That's a field representative for Senator Jeff Merkley. We received an email from her. That was the first we had heard of it. We have, as of this day, not received any official notification from the Environmental Protection Agency that Coffin Butte landfill is subject to an enforcement action. We understand that that's what has been said in a public meeting, but we ourselves have not received any notification of an enforcement action. If we do, we will make that known to you as soon as it happens, if it in fact does happen. So I just think that's an important point of clarification. We did mention at our virtual town hall, our webinar, that was attended by more than a hundred people, the first week of July, or July 8th, I believe it was, that we were aware or that we had been notified by Senator Merkley's office that this was a possibility. But again, we reiterated at that time that we have not been notified officially by the EPA. So I think that's an important point of clarification because I want to make it clear that we are not trying to withhold information from the annual report. We are not trying to withhold information from you. We are not trying to be inaccurate in our report. That is a, a timeline of the events as they have occurred thus far.
I just have a follow up question to those remarks. Does Republic Services have a government affairs consultant in DC who tracks this type of legislation? And were you, were any of them contacted by the senators? So if this came as a total surprise, you're talking about another month before you knew about it.
That is correct. We do have, I'm part of the government affairs, public affairs team, although I focus primarily on public affairs. We do have lobbyists in DC. We actually, when we heard from the field representative from Senator Merkley's office, we went online and we had our air quality expert at the corporate office and our legal department go and watch the hearing that we found online. And that was when we became aware of it.
Fair. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I have a follow up comment, I guess. So the, the methane emissions in question were in 2022. Is that correct? That were.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I would just comment that Republic Services was aware of the issue. So in the future, it would be nice to see in the report an acknowledgement of past mistakes and maybe how you have gone to remedy those and make sure that they are not still happening.
Yes, we can absolutely put that in the report. We, we were trying to be as responsive as we could back in February after this had become an issue. And so we wrote a memo separately about the methane and that sort of landed in between the two reports. That's why we also put the memo about arsenic in this report because we were trying to capture that. So I easily could have resubmitted the methane memo and updated it. I didn't do that because I felt like we had already had that discussion in the public, but we can absolutely do that in the future, Commissioner. Not a problem. With that, I think I will turn it over to Brett and Ian to get started on our, our annual report.
Just some high points. On now? Yep. Sorry about that. It is some high points, some numbers to share. As you were, we've got about 740 acres of property out of Coffin Butte, only 178 currently as a, for a disposal, which is about 24%. We do manage about 40 acres of wetlands and currently 45 acres of the site is closed and capped. Some other high points between the Corvallis Hauling Division and Coffin Butte landfill, we employ about 97 employees, but in Western Oregon, we do employ over 300. The gas that's pulled off of Coffin Butte currently powers about 4,000 homes. We are currently working with PNGC to expand that, that generation capability. We, we recognize that we've got excess gas and we actually approached them late last year about utilizing that gas. And so we are moving forward with some meetings, I think in the next week actually, to talk about options with getting that gas out on the grid or to expand their, their generation plan. Another point that we really proud of is that we've diverted 140,000 tons of compost or yard debris out of the landfill and have reused that at Pacific Region Compost where we are constantly making compost and we sell it to local farmers out in the market to Scotts, who makes Miracle Grow, those kinds of things. So we're, so we're constantly doing some great things here with pulling organics out of the landfill. Want to go to the next slide? I know this is a hot topic about capacity. If you look at By the Numbers, it says 13.4 years of life left, but that was as of December of 23. So you take a six months off of that, about 12, 12 years. So with the expansion that we're requesting of six, that gives us about 18 years of life under the current framework of Coffin Butte. So it's kind of the numbers on the capacity side of things. Some key things that we want to talk about with the expansion application. And we believe that we did a really good job of listening during the Benton County Talks Trash and listening to the public. You know, back in 21, the, the expansion request was for a 12 year expansion and it included a vacating Coffin Butte Road. What you'll see in this, this expansion is that it's 50% smaller. So we're only going for a six year versus 12. In this, in this expansion, we're putting in efforts to improve Coffin Butte Road with some turn lanes to help with traffic as well as bike lanes. We've also agreed to put in some additional vegetation along Highway 99 to block the visibility. And as always, you know, we believe that this will be a reliable and affordable disposal capacity while the county works with a solid materials management plan to try to divert tons out of the landfill. Go on to the methane.
Yep. I'm going to move to the next one. Okay. Oh, sorry. Here we are. There. So just talk a little bit about gas collection system at Coffin Butte. We have a very robust system that we've installed. It's about three times the industry standard. Industry standard's about an acre or one well per acre and we have about three. It's a, it's a system we continue to invest in every year. We've invested almost nine and a half million dollars since 2019. We're actually right in the middle of an expansion of the collection system right now. We have a contractor on site that is drilling 14 new vertical wells and installing 18 horizontal wells. That's some work that'll wrap up probably towards the end of August. Again, Brett talked about it a bit, but we have a long-term partnership with PNGC Power that they utilize the gas to generate electricity for about 4,000 homes. Some other things to remember is that all landfills generate methane. It's a part of waste breaking down and some drier sites generate methane at lower rates and actually reintroduce water to increase the rate to where it's a usable rate of generation so that they can use it to generate power or some other use. Move to the next one. Talk a bit about emissions and modeling. So as a sustainability company, we recognize the importance of greenhouse gas emissions. And that's one of the reasons why we invest so much in the gas system every year that, that I previously talked about. You do hear a lot, there are a lot of new technologies that are currently in development with drones and satellites and other aerial methods. Monitoring currently at the landfill though is, is by a prescribed EPA method, which involves a technician on the ground walking a route for the regulations. Some things to remember, like I said, all of landfills generate emissions. They fluctuate from day to day and week to week. So you could monitor three weeks in a row and have slightly different results because parametric pressure and other weather conditions, temperature can, can impact it. And then at a national level, we are working with Carbon Mapper and the EPA to come up with new innovative methods to help reduce emissions over time. This is a summary of the permits that we have currently in place at Coffin Buttes. Also, we're going to talk a bit about groundwater monitoring. So we monitor groundwater Coffin Butte twice per year, typically April and October. That coincides with kind of high groundwater levels and low groundwater levels. All of the monitoring is done per DEQ environmental monitoring plan. So it's a plan that basically an instruction manual on you, how often we monitor, what we monitor for. And that's a document that DEQ has to review and approve. Some of the things we test for are volatile organic compounds, metals, inorganics, and all results for 2023 were below appropriate standards. For the next one. So this is a map of the groundwater and water monitoring network at Coffin Buttes. There's a series of groundwater wells, under drains. So those are pipes that are underneath all of the liner system at the landfill so that we can monitor the water coming from beneath the landfill to make sure it's not contaminated. There's, we monitor at leachate sumps so that we can determine what's in the actual leachate. And then we also monitor at pismeters across the site. And those are used to measure water levels to create a groundwater contour map for the twice a year monitoring. Some high points of the monitoring from last year. So you see MW12S is high, has an arrow pointing at it kind of in the center. That is one of the wells that is kind of a barometer to measure the effectiveness of remediation that was implemented in the 1990s. So there was a gas system installed and a geosynthetic cap, so a plastic cap over the waste in that area. And the, the wells in that area are just to monitor the effectiveness of that remediation that was completed. On the far west side, you'll see an area labeled closed landfill. Sometimes people call it burn dump or other areas. That's the, the oldest portion of the landfill that we moved over a four year period from that unlined portion of the site into lined portions of cells three and five. And so any residual impacts in that area will dissipate over time because we basically removed the source of any potential contamination. And then on the east side of the site, we have a couple wells that did exceed for arsenic. We have talked about this before. We talked about this back in February with the previous report and had the memo, but that's based off of long-term monitoring. The arsenic is naturally occurring. We don't see increasing trends over time. MW9S, which is all the way out on, along the highway, has been monitored since the early 90s prior to any landfill construction, even in the area, and has had elevated arsenic at that point. So in summary, just everything was below standards and DEQ approved the annual monitoring report. The next. A little bit on PFOS because that is a fairly big subject lately. So PFOS is a group of about 15,000 chemicals that have been in use since the 1950s in a wide range of consumer products. We list a few, but you name it, they're probably in it. Coffin Butte does receive. Coffin Butte does receive materials that contain PFOS, but we are not a generator of it. We're a receiver similar to a wastewater plant that receives domestic wastewater that has PFOS in it. And the landfill is one of the solutions for helping store PFOS for the long term because there will need to be a place to put it. And it's something EPA and DEQ are actively working on regulations and requirements for treatment and testing. And we will continue to work with our wastewater disposal partners in the city of Corvallis and the city of Salem's as, as regulations evolve. And we anticipate, yeah, having to make changes and treatments of some sort in the future. This one is just so everybody's kind of familiar with what the landfill liner system looks like at Coffin Buttes. On the left side is a kind of a generic version of what the EPA minimum liner system is. And it consists of starting from the base of a compacted clay layer and a single membrane, geomembrane. So it's the plastic that's welded together in the, in the continuous layer. And then on top of that, there's a leachate collection system. Oregon is much more robust in their requirements. We, they actually require three liners in addition to clay. So on the right side, that is our standard liner detail. And starting from the base, we have that under drain. And that, that's a layer to divert any groundwater away from the base of the landfill. And that's where that under drain pipe I talked about sampling, that's where that would be. On top of that is our first layer of liner. And then we have a 12-inch secondary leachate collection system. And so that's where leachate is any water that moves through the waste that we collect. Then on top of that, we have our second layer of liner, followed by a product called Geosynthetic Clay Liner, or GCL for short. And that's an engineered product that replaces the 24 inches of compacted clay. It's much more consistent than natural clay and it can go through much more rigorous quality control because it's manufactured in a factory. Then on top of that, we have our primary liner system and then leachate collection system. So many, many more layers than the federal requirements. Next slide.
Yeah, taken over from into operations. So and again, in an attempt for transparency, we're going to talk about a couple of OSHA inspections that happened, one in early or actually late of 22 and actually late of 23 and again in February of this year. So during the OSHA inspection, there, there were a couple findings. They list them as serious, although they weren't so serious that we couldn't fix them immediately. We actually fixed them right while the inspectors were on site. So those include, we had some oxygen and acetylene bottles that were chained up. But unfortunately, due to some different sizes of canisters, the chain didn't cross the, the canisters in the right place. So we had to remove some of the smaller canisters and kind of standardize because over the years, we've just gotten different sizes from air, gas, or whoever we got them from. So that was fixed immediately. There was also a slip hazard where we had a compressor for our gas collection system in the shop, had a condensation line that was purposefully draining towards a drain, but because there was dirt and debris on the floor, it turned that into mud and it created a slip hazard. So we plumbed that condensation line outside to prevent any more water to be on the floor inside the shop. So, so again, those things were fixed right away. During that investigation, there was also some claims that we had contaminated soil outside of our shop due to employees washing equipment. So we took that very seriously. And as we tore down that shop in preparation of, of a cell, we took off the top 12 to 18 inches of soil and put it inside the cell. And then we had US Ecology come and do samples of the soil. And there was no findings of contamination. And we've got that report if, if needed to verify that there were no findings. So we took it very seriously. Part of the inspection also talked about the impact of dust or methane on employees at Coffin Butte. So we're currently in the middle of a, of a three-phase project with a third-party company that is looking at air quality and methane exposure of our employees. They actually were on site last week with all kinds of monitoring devices on our employees, testing the air quality. And they are going to be taking further steps with the methane exposure as well. They're working with Ian on timing of when they're pulling wells so that we can show worst-case scenario where our well employees are there and what kind of exposure they have. And so we're looking to see some results probably in the coming weeks as far as the impact. And if there's any further PPE that's required for our employees on site. And that was part of the abatement from the OSHA inspection. It's a little bit of information as far as where the waste comes into Coffin Butte. As you can see, about 80% of it does come from the Willamette Valley region, about 15% from Lincoln County, which is Dolls and Thompson's disposal over on the coast. And then a small percentage from other counties. Those small percentages from other counties are often like special waste or opportunities that we're going after. So for example, we always talk about Coffin Butte being a dirt-poor landfill. And what that means to us is that part of our requirement daily is that we cover the, the garbage with dirt. And so anytime that there's dirt opportunities, a construction job, a highway job, we're looking on trying to bring dirt in to help us with, with our daily cover.
I wanted to talk a little bit about the Environmental Trust Fund. There's, it seems like a little confusion just in the general public about the trust fund versus closure, post-closure mechanisms. So the Environmental Trust Fund was started in the early 2000s as part of the franchise agreement. I believe it was originally funded with $5 million. It's an investment fund, so it has continued kind of, it kind of follows with the economy, but it's continued to largely grow over time to over $16 million. And it's outlined in the franchise agreement what it could be used for and those types of things. The other one is closure and post-closure. So these are bonds that we provide to DEQ on an annual basis that are updated by a professional engineer. So they estimate the cost that it would take to close the landfill today. So if we shut the doors today, it would cost, they're estimating about just over $19 million to cap it and close it. And then they also estimate the amount that it would take to care for the landfill for 30 years after it closes. And so 30 years is the EPA/DEQ minimum requirement that an operator must take care of a landfill. But that's something that could be extended at DEQ's discretion. Basically, they evaluate the data to determine if the landfill is largely inert. And so they can extend it and we would be required to continue to care for it longer than the 30 years if needed.
Thank you. We, we did end, I think, on a high note to talk a little bit more about RMA. So here's how this stands right now. We've been working with the counties, we've worked with, with Bailey at Benton County to submit some surveys that have come out from the PRO, which is the Producer Responsibility Organization that is going to be operated by the group chosen by DEQ. They are called the Circular Action Alliance and they operate other PROs. I, I think they will be operating in Colorado, for example, with a new EPR ruling there as well. And so we've been working with all the counties just up until last week to get that survey in. It required lots of information about how many routes do we use to collect recycling? How many customers a day? How many stops every day? So there was a lot of technical information about the actual operations. The other piece of that is what do we need for depots? Because part of EMA or RMA includes expanded recycling depots. They're called expanded PRO depots. And you're going to hear a lot of brand-new terms we've all gotten used to, you know, a MRF, but a MRF is now a CREP. So they're co-mingled recycling processing facilities. So you're going to hear a lot of new terms and I'll try to remember to tell you what they are. But we'll be working with the county here in Benton County to determine what that, that expanded depot looks like. We know that we will have expanded depots at Coffin Butte landfill and at the Corvallis-Walnut Street location. And what that means is that there'll be new materials that will be collected there. Two in particular that the program has highlighted are plastic film. So we'll be having plastic film collection and expanded polystyrene or what we typically call Styrofoam will be collected there. And these are items that will be collected at no cost to the consumer. So they're collected as a part of the PRO program. We think there could be other items. We don't know yet what those depots are going to need to collect, but there could be other items like appliances and some of the other harder-to-get-rid-of things that people could find a convenient source to do that. So we're working really hard on the depots and getting those surveys completed. And I think what we're looking for right now is waiting for DEQ or CAA to put out this education and outreach material because they want it to be standardized statewide. And so what we'll do is we'll take the template from them and localize it and make it appropriate for our area, but it'll be basically the same information that's going out statewide. And how we do that will be a process that we follow closely with the state. One of the things we're looking at, as you know, I think we used to run a master recycler program because the county just didn't have the capacity to do that, either Lynn or Benton County. So we worked with Oregon State to operate a master recycler program. During COVID, that kind of fizzled. People just, we tried out to do it remotely, but it just wasn't as effective. And we didn't have enough people sign up last year to take the class. So we're looking at what could we do that would be sort of like a mini master recycler program? Something that we could do, maybe, maybe quarterly do a seminar that could be in-person and online and have different topics as the master recycler class was. So we're, we're just sort of brainstorming all kinds of information that, all kinds of ways we can get that information out. So I, I think that's basically it to talk about RMA for now, although stay tuned because you're going to hear a lot more as we go along. And I think, oh, that slide's not there. I'll send you, I'll send you a link to the DEQ information as well so that you, there's a great one-pager that will give you a really great overview to talk with people about. Yes.
Julie, would you go through the acronyms again?
Okay. RMA is Recycling Modernization Act. PRO is Producer Responsibility Organization. And EPR is really the impetus for RMA through the PRO. Was that good? EPR is Extended Producer Responsibility. And I guess that's one thing I should tell you is that RMA primarily is an extended producer responsibility organization and law. And what it will do is it will make the people who produce these products, it's primarily aimed at plastics, and who sell those products in Oregon responsible for the recovery and end of life of those products. And so the, that's kind of the stick, but the carrot is there's something they call eco-modulation built into it. And that means if you produce a product that's easily recoverable, something that's very easy to recycle or reuse in some way, you'll pay less than if you produce a product that's very difficult to find a market for and recycle. And, and so there's a lot of incentive to try to get these producers to put things in standardized materials that can be recycled together and to simplify the process a little bit. So those, CAA is the Circular Action Alliance and they are the organization that will be running the Producer Responsibility Organization.
Okay, one more.
CREP. That is co-mingle recycling processing facility. And as a part of the RMA, those folks are under a lot of pressure to, they have required contamination amounts. They're required to get the recycling cleaner than they've ever been able to get it before. They will be required to put in millions of dollars worth of equipment. We're not sure how that's going to work because the funding doesn't begin till the day the program begins, on July 1st, 2026, so, or 2025. So it, it will be a phase in because they can't put the material, the, and they can't start it and then get reimbursed. So they really have to wait. But the creps are going to be working very hard to get as much material out. And there may be some secondary sorting facilities where materials go to, to get it even further sorted. So we're, we're excited to watch how that all happens.
Thank you.
Sure. Could we go back to the slide that talks about By the Numbers? At the beginning?
Is it the methane?
No.
This one? No, it was, it talked about odor complaints and other complaints. Is it that one? No.
Yes, yes. Could you please speak to those 25 complaints? Those are more than just odor complaints, is that correct? Or what, what kind of complaints?
I just turned it off, sorry. Yes, Commissioner, Bailey provided us with an Excel spreadsheet. I want to say probably six weeks ago, a month ago, I can't remember, maybe. Okay, so as long as I thought, time flies. Provided us with an Excel spreadsheet that I believe Daniel Reddick started. It encapsulates email and voicemail complaints that have come into the county since late 2022 through early 2024. There are multiple complaints from the same individuals. And then there are also, you know, a array of, of complaints. Many of them are about odor. Some, however, focused on methane or fire risk. We ended up, and this, this, I'll take responsibility for this, this was my fault. When Bailey sent that in April, I did not realize, having not put the reports together before, that that was supposed to be included in the annual report. So that is why we put it on this slide here so we can present it to you today. And we also made note of it during our, our webinar that we had in early July. And so we do have a recording of it. And if it's the county's desire that that be included or incorporated into the annual reports going forward, we'll have, we'll do that.
Sure. Well, I would like to request that, since you have time to bring this back to DSAC, that it is included. And then on page seven of the report that we have, which is page 32 of our electronic packet, there's a section called Title V Air Monitoring Report, 123. Number three, the landfill did not receive any odor complaints from the public in 2023. And I, I take that to mean that you did not directly receive any because the paragraph under that says that DEQ gave, gave you nine odor complaints, which I assume were from the public. So if, if you could go back and just sort of clarify that, I think that would be nice.
Yes, we can do that. Would you like that done in the actual report or in a separate memo in the report?
Yes, thank you.
One, we recognize that one of the challenges, and this came up obviously during BCTT, is that there is no single odor reporting system. So when we get reports from DEQ, they're often delayed by, you know, weeks or months. And the, the county system, you know, Bailey wrapped those in over a 14-month period. So we are trying to come up with ways that we can be more responsive in the moment. And so that's why we have put an odor reporting portal on the website. It, it allows the resident or the complainant to fill out their name, their location, rank the strength of the odor, describe what it smells like, any other relevant conditions. Is it windy by their house? Is it raining, et cetera? And then when they hit submit, that immediately sends an email that is accessed by multiple individuals at the site so we could investigate that promptly. So we're hoping that that helps on a go-forward basis.
I just wanted to mention and then I'll pass it to Bailey, that this is one of DSAC's key roles is to assemble all of these complaints from the various data streams. So I am very hopeful that moving forward, they will be able to serve that role and help to assemble all of the community feedback in one place. and help to assemble all of the community feedback in one place.
Thank you, Commissioners. I was just going to mention that DSAC, the Disposal Site Advisory Council, is going to be putting together some reports for '21, '22, and '23. So those will be coming to you in the upcoming months. I've also contacted the DEQ to get information about any complaints that they've received.
I do have a couple more questions as well. I understand that you have a very robust methane collection system and a higher density of, of pipes to collect that methane, and it's partly because of the nature of the site for Coffin Butte. But, you know, it would be far more revealing to me if those were framed as proportional to methane produced by the landfill or proportional to the tons of waste disposed of at Coffin Butte, rather than just, oh, this many pipes. Because in, in the abstract, that's not very meaningful. I also know that in terms of biogas plant expansion, when folks from Republic every year have come to us and said that you're going to be expanding the biogas plant. I've been in office for eight years and there has been no expansion. If this is really a serious conversation with you for, to, I think, PNGC? I don't know what that acronym stands for. Pacific Northwest Gas Company?
Generating, Pacific Northwest Generating Co-op.
Okay.
Shortened it and they've dropped all of that and it's just PNGC now.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I, I hope that that really does happen. I also understand that those, the flare, the flares are old, and old technology, and they're supposed to be now enclosed. And that, that is something that would be helpful, especially given fire risk and the tinder-dry conditions. So I'm looking forward to hearing and soon about facilities improvements in that arena.
So I'll go, if all goes well, the, the new enclosed flare actually should be starting this morning.
That would be excellent.
So they were working on it, they've been working on it the last few weeks, but.
And that, that new enclosed flare will replace both of the existing flares?
It will, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. I have one more set of questions, but I know Commissioner Malone has some as well.
I'll follow up on the methane question. I assume methane and organics are, or methane comes from organics, is it?
Yes, that's correct. That's, that's why diverting the amount we divert away to PRC and then organics recycling like cardboard and food waste and those types of things are really important to reducing the overall methane potential that waste can generate.
I, I assume, I'll go back to my C and D, trying to keep that out of the landfill. I assume lumber breaks down, probably slowly, but at some point releases methane. And that would, seems like that would be another reason to keep construction debris out of the landfill.
Yes, it definitely does break down. It's one of the slower decomposing items because it is large woody debris. The smaller yard debris is, more easily breaks down and food waste especially, more easily breaks down. But yes, all wood can.
Sure, Malone, I'll also add that when you see those numbers for the amount of organics, the percentage of organics in landfill, that includes green waste from your yard. It includes food waste, it includes wood, cardboard, and also things like clothing. So there's a lot that goes into that and, and I think a lot of opportunity as well.
Well, that's what I was going to say. That seems like getting the word out to the community that most people have the option of separating out their organics and, and it would help with the life of the landfill and reducing the amount of methane produced.
Commissioner Wise? I have a, I guess a piggyback or a follow-up on the gas collection piece. You've stated, and it's in your report, that your, your gas collection infrastructure is three times industry standards and meets or exceeds requirements under the U.S. Methane Emissions Reduction Plan. But then we have this situation in 2022 where methane was leaking. How, how can you, can you explain that to me? Like, make that make sense to me, please?
Yeah, so you're, when you're going out to do surface emission monitoring, you're expecting to find spots. That's the whole point. The piece that is, the general public may not understand is the EPA doesn't actually have methane limits. They have methods that you must follow to monitor. So that's that surface monitoring where the technician is out walking the site. So finding things is expected. That's, that's just part of the process. It's kind of like, I think I likened it to car maintenance when we were here in February, where when you take your car in for an oil change, they're looking at belts and brakes and other things. And so you're, you're expecting to find things. That's not a, that, that's a good thing.
My understanding though is that in 2022, we didn't just find things, we found some examples of far exceedance.
So anything over, over 500 parts per million is considered a finding, but it's not, there's, there's no levels of findings. It's just, you're, you're looking for these spots and then you remediate them. And so depending on what the, what the portion is, it might be adding additional cover soil because it's a little thin in an area. Or if it's an area where we have the tarps and there were some settlements, it's taping the tarp up so that it's sealed up to a pipe better than it was, or, or those types of things. And then if you're unable to fix it, that's when you expand, that you expand the gas system. So there's, there's a whole series of steps that is outlined in the permits on, on, on what you do.
Okay, so I guess if I didn't specifically say this before, another request I have, which, which goes along with the sort of acknowledgement of the methane emissions issues from 2022, is to also include what has been done about it to remedy the situation.
Commissioner, before we move on, I did, I did want to provide some additional information in the interest of transparency. I believe I mentioned this when some individuals were at the landfill for a tour and we mentioned it on the webinar. But the EPA also came back in, was it June? June of 2024, so June of this year, a couple of months ago, to do another surface monitoring emissions walk-around. That's not the official term, but that's what they did. And they did find exceedances at that time as well. We have not received the EPA's official report on that. That was just what they verbally told us while we were there. And Ian, correct me if I'm getting anything wrong. I believe there were something like 40, if I'm not mistaken. Given, given that, given the EPA's focus on methane testing and the, the rise of this, this issue as it relates to climate control as a company and then also at Coffin Butte, we are looking at additional steps that we can take that would further reduce the likelihood of emissions exceedances. And that includes things like final capping of additional parts of the landfill. So I, I do want to make you aware for the record that yes, we were inspected again in June of this year. Yes, there were exceedances and no, we haven't gotten the official report. But we were told at that time there was no enforcement, enforcement action in place against the landfill. But we are looking at additional steps we can take on the methane front.
Thank you. I appreciate the information and the transparency. So if you could include, you know, those things in the report too, that would, you know, what steps will be taken, that'd be, sorry, helpful. Sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no, I was just going to add a little more color to this. Coffin Butte's not unique. EPA is looking at landfills as part of the current administration's policy. So they're looking at landfills across the country. So they're doing this type of work at all of the larger landfills all across the country. So this is part of EPA's overall long-term.
Sure. And I, I very much appreciate that. But I also appreciate the fact that those landfills are not in my county, they're not in my backyard, but this one is.
I wanted to follow up on that one more time and just say that I think one of the most disturbing things to me about the first EPA survey in '23, and, and it was the hearing that the survey protocol itself that was being used by the monitoring technician from Republic was not in compliance with what EPA folks use as a monitoring protocol. And that gives me great pause just because it makes me very uncomfortable about all of the self-monitoring that Republic does. So it gives me a little bit more skepticism about some of the water quality monitoring and some of the other protocols, even though they're approved by DEQ, you don't have a DEQ tech next to you or someone else that is validating that data collection or data analysis. So that, I view that as one of the roles of our Disposal Site Advisory Committee. We've got some great folks on that committee. They can help, you know, when they receive the data from Republic or, you know, talk to you across the table and ask those questions. So I'm really looking forward to a renewed and improved relationship in our Disposal Site Advisory Committee so that we have better faith in some of the, the data and the reports that are coming to us. And I just wanted to say that with respect to arsenic, I appreciate the memo that you put together, Ginger, but it did not address the, the key questions that were put forth and that Joel Geyer is still raising, the fact that arsenic is elevated in the local rock here, but not to the degree that we see it in some of the data from landfill. And it, you know, we'd love to see more of that background data that you are comparing Coffin Butte numbers to. And also that time series going back to, you know, '91, rather than having those missing first few years or kind of a false baseline. So those are the kinds of questions that come up. And because the company has not been able to share, you know, those answers to those questions, it generates a certain, again, amount of skepticism, especially in this community where we have so many PhDs and so many engineers and they know how to look at all of this and, and, and see when something might not be completely transparent. So, thank you.
Could I comment on the last couple items? So all of the data is in our annual, our annual DEQ monitoring report that's provided to the county. It's about a 750-page report. So that memo was just a summary of existing data that's in those reports. So it's all available publicly. Bailey has copies of them, so it's free for anyone to review. We are just providing a high-level summary because the DEQ monitoring report is a technical report meant for DEQ geologists for, for their review. And so that, we're, we just pulled the summary of some of the data, but it's all, all available for anyone that wants to review it.
Again, I will reiterate my statement that I'm looking forward to the Disposal Site Advisory Committee becoming more functional so that we have an opportunity for community members to engage with that data.
And I have a, a question for the Commissioners and maybe first staff. Would it be, would there be value in, when that 700-page report is submitted to Benton County, that it is included in one of our packets, not necessarily to make any judgment on, but just FYI, maybe under the consent calendar or something like that, just so that we see that we've, you know, got it and it's more accessible to the public?
Makes sense.
What do the Commissioners feel about that?
Make that happen.
I acknowledge too, it'll make the packet a lot bigger, so there's pros and cons.
A couple things. There was a earlier public testimony about a little confusion about being in county or being charged for out of county. And I remember before I even took office, there was, you folks were going to triple the rate for yourself hauling, and then there was a discussion, then it got back to $30 or now it's 35. I, I would hope that on the website, on your website, that it's clear who gets charged that fee and who does not. That's, seems like that should be fairly easy to clarify.
Yes, I, I will look at the website. I will see what it says. And then given the, the confusion and the recent comments that have come into the county, make sure that the language is reflective of what is in the franchise agreement because we are following the parameters in terms of the franchise agreement as it relates to a residential-sized vehicle.
Okay, thank you. And last question, comment, seems like each time we meet, there's questions and issues that we need more information on. And I'm never a fan of more meetings, but instead of, now that we're on schedule for the annual report, maybe much briefer, but a quarterly update to continue some of these questions and conversations. And I'm not saying a full-blown, like the annual report, but just getting back to us on some of the issues that we talk about. And I know Commissioner Ogierou raised the arsenic question a year ago or quite a while ago. And that's not a very good conversation if you have to ask a question and then a year later get the answer. So maybe you'll figure out a relatively short, but suggest quarterly update.
If that's something that the county would like to do, we're certainly open to that. When we were here in February, and I think as a result of BCTT, when we first started talking about ways that we could better communicate with the county, there were several ideas that we were talking about and the county was suggesting, and we just didn't land on one. And so if this is your preferred approach, we can continue sending, you know, more detailed memos like we did with methane and arsenic, if, if you have additional questions on that. And then we can also do quarterly reports in person or submitted, whatever your pleasure.
I think that, again, I'm going to go back to the Disposal Site Advisory Committee, that is supposed to be playing that role. But we, we should talk about it as a board and with staff to see how much more time that will take and maybe give our Disposal Site Advisory Committee an opportunity to function. The, I do want to say that I am very glad to hear about the current field assessment you have going on with respect to employee safety on the landfill. And I look forward to hearing the results of that work. It's reassuring to hear that doing a thorough investigation of both dust and methane exposure for those folks that are working on the landfill site.
I just wanted to acknowledge that we did receive several questions from members of the public that did not, some of them, a lot of them came from hoping to be discussed at DSAC. They ran out of time, but since we are setting this back to DSAC, it sounds like there will be time to address most of those questions. There were two things that I did want to highlight or ask. One thing to highlight is we heard from neighbors about their fears of risk of fire. And, you know, I think we can all relate to that. Is there, so one question was, do you monitor fires? Or do you have a way to monitor fires or fire risk after hours?
I guess what I would say is that, you know, the honest answer is no. I mean, we, you know, we rely on the emergency response of a dare village, you know, and we have a great partnership. They've got all of our contact information. We were talking and we've heard feedback, even in DSAC, that there obviously is some desire. And so one of the things I've written down here is to reach out to other landfills that we manage. We've got good relationships with some other landfill managers and see what kind of technology they use for after-hour monitoring, whether it's infrared cameras. You know, I'm, I'm a board member for the MRF up in Salem and they've got a fire rover. I don't exactly understand that technology or know it, but I'm assuming it's some kind of a camera system that's looking for hotspots. And so we're going to look into that because obviously it's, it's a hot point. And so we're going to look into that because obviously it's a hot point, no pun intended, that we have some kind of monitoring, you know, 24/7 of the site. So we'll be looking into that as well.
Thank you. I'm happy to hear it. Then the other, the other side to that was notifying neighbors if there was, if there is an incident. Is that something that you would maybe consider doing in the future? Do you want?
Yeah, I would just, I mean, at this point, we rely on the emergency responders to notify who they deem appropriate because that's kind of what they do.
Sure. And I, you know, I'm not sure, I don't think the commissioners have the authority to require you to do that, but think about it for the future. It might go, you know, into building trust back.
So one thing I can say is we've instituted a new e-blast system where we update folks on key things that are going on at the landfill. We've used it to advertise our community meetings the day that we filed the CUP. I had intended to send out a sort of landfill update roundup e-blasts this week because it's been about two or three weeks since we sent something out. That was going to include notification or just a little detail about the grass fire by the flare, among some other things. So we have that tool. That list has grown to about, it's grown about threefold. It's close to about 400 people right now. So we have that tool at our disposal. I think the question that I would have for the commissioners is, are you desirous of sending something out immediately upon when something happens or just a steady flow of communication? I think that's, we want to be timely and we want to be responsive, but we don't want to, you know, spam people.
Sure. Yeah. Personally, I think emergency response notices should come from the emergency managers rather than from Republic Services. But I think that we need to see a little bit more collaboration between the emergency managers, responders, and Republic Services to have a protocol for when that is communicated with community members. Because we heard about it as commissioners, didn't have very much information. But, you know, neighbors want to know and need to know, and we need to do better.
And how could people sign up for that?
So the signup sheet is on our website. There's a way to sign up for news and updates. It's coffinbutlandfill.com. And it's right there on the homepage. And then if anybody has any questions, they're happy to reach out or they're welcome to reach out to me directly. I can leave some cards or my email address at republic is G R O U G H, Grow@republicservices.com. So if somebody wants to reach out to me directly, I can get them signed up as well.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to reiterate that I made four requests today, and I'll just read those all real quick. So for everyone's convenience. Number one, I asked about what progress are you making locally towards your 2030 goals? Number two, an acknowledgement in the report about methane emission issues from 2022 and what has been done to correct the issue and prevent it from occurring in the future and/or what steps will you take? Number three, clarifying the odor complaints and where they came from. And number four, adding the, all of the complaints, the 25 complaints listed to the report.
I've been taking notes. So I have all of those. My question to Bailey and to you is, do you want us to provide that Excel spreadsheet that you put together as an addendum? Or do you want a summary in the report? How would you like us to do that?
I can put it in as an appendix, for example. I mean, if it could actually be in the report, I think that would be good because it is the 2023 report. But as long as it's, an addendum would work too, I guess.
Okay. I just, so it's got individuals' names on it and addresses, and so I'm just trying to...
Well, maybe not, I mean, not the exact, it doesn't have to go into that much detail. But just some acknowledgement that they, that that happened.
Sure. Yep.
Be identified.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments at this time?
I just have a quick question. I think, Ian, you were talking about the use of drones, that it's not a best practice in landfill, or you just want to line up with that. I'm just, my understanding with drones is it does like improve public awareness and measure, it helps measure methane emissions, and it can help prevent fires. And we kind of talked a little bit at the end about fires. Do we use them at all? Or do you use them all?
We don't currently at the local level. It's still an emerging technology. We can get you more information kind of on a global scale on what, what the pros and cons of that technology is currently. But currently, I mean, for actual compliance, we have to use the EPA method on the ground.
Thank you. If I may add to that, so there are a couple of well-known drone flyovers that are done. One is obviously Carbon Mapper, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. We have a air quality specialist who's based in the Midwest. And she, she handles air quality compliance issues for the company, you know, throughout the United States. And so she works in coordination with Carbon Mapper whenever they do a flyover, whether it's at Coffin Butte or our landfill in North Carolina or Mississippi or wherever. They do notify her of that data. And so we are working in conjunction with Carbon Mapper. The challenge is that those flyovers capture a specific point in time. And so it might not be reflective of what's going on two hours earlier or two hours later, just depending on wind, weather patterns, you know, the makeup of the trash. We have also employed another flyover tool that we use to monitor some of our landfills called Fermatec. And we have that technology as well. So that's something that we've started using at some of our landfills to better capture data about what's going on there.
And that's a more continuous monitoring approach rather than a point in time?
Fermatec, I believe, is still point in time. Yeah. There's, there's not, as far as I know, and Ian, you'd probably be more of the technical expert on this, there's not a continuous monitoring drone approach. You know, there's not a constant aerial flyover approach that's available technology-wise yet.
Right. But going back to fires, it can identify those hotspots, right? If we had one at night, because you don't monitor at night.
I think Brett was talking about infrared technology or cameras that are positioned on-site, which would be different than, I think, a drone flyover. That would be something that would be presumably installed at various locations at the landfill.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of expertise or knowledge of it, so that's why I said I would follow up with what other landfills are doing. The infrared thing was brought up by actually Ken Eklund during the DSAC. And so I did write that down as a suggestion that we would look into because I don't have a lot of expertise in that area.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you very much. We have spent a lot of time on trash today and on the landfill, but it definitely merits the attention that we're giving it. And I would like to thank community members too, who are engaged and participating in the process. And we'll keep having these conversations. Thank you very much. And at this point, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Okay, we are going to reconvene. Yeah. We'll be reconvening at this time. The next item of business was a broadband update from Adam Lortz and Joseph Frenell and Rachel Matic Hughes. Unfortunately, they had a hard stop in terms of their availability, so we will reschedule that item. So there was a request from Adam Lortz that if we have any questions about broadband issues specifically, please let him know so that he can help make sure that that presentation, when they come back, is as spot on for what our questions are as possible. So at this point, we're going to turn to Christopher Jacobs for the Corvallis Benton Economic Development Office update.
Great to be with you this morning. There's been quite a bit to update you on since we last met. Just one technical thing, the clicker button, which one is it to change slides? The one to the right?
Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Okay. Yeah. Got it. Well, I'm pointing at the screen, that's probably. There we are. Again, thanks so much. The strategic plan before you has been updated with graphic designs, and within the plan, we are updating, providing progress updates on each goal. So that's the format in which I'll be providing updates today. Within the plan, under each goal, you'll be able to read the progress that's been made in the last quarter, and we'll kind of just jump right into it. This is sort of a cover sheet that explains what the Corvallis Benton EDO is. We did a SWOT analysis with our Economic Development Coalition. That's where this information came from. And this is really where we get into the quarterly updates that I have to provide today. When we last met, we talked about how we want to be a data-driven organization. I have some data to share that we've gathered over the last quarter. This first table, we have county assessor data that shows taxable value growth for commercial and industrial lands over the last five years. We're also reporting on which incentives are being used. So we have two enterprise zone tax exemptions, countywide uncommon cabinetry and natural point. At this point, there are no other incentives being utilized by companies within Benton County that we actively manage.
Can I ask a question about that?
Please, yeah, jump in anytime.
Some of those, because they're within a particular geographic area, correct, those companies, and some of the companies have aged out of those incentives, but they, operations have greatly grown within those zones. Is there a need to explore new geographies and new zones for new companies to be able to take advantage of those types of incentives?
That is an option, and we'll talk about that here in the next.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. So Goal 1B is to effectively manage and encourage adoption of tools aimed at mixed-use development, industrial development, housing, and assist with marketing those development opportunities. So I provided here a list of the economic development tools that are in use. The option exists for any jurisdiction within the county to adopt additional tools, particularly around housing. I think there's a great opportunity to adopt a multi-unit property tax exemption program in other communities, the way that Corvallis has. Dare Village is also underway with their work to establish an urban renewal district, which could help with housing down the road, but that's really a function of time, so they won't have a ton of money generated right away through a tax increment financing district. But adoption of additional enterprise zone districts would be a tool that could help with a number of development projects, bringing from housing to commercial. Our Goal 1C is to effectively manage the airport industrial park, and what we're doing is following the adoption of a budget to annex. We've been meeting at regular cadence to go through that application process and update the land development code to make those industrial areas zoning really fit market demand. So that project is underway in earnest, and we expect that should be completed before the end of the fiscal year. We also finished a wetland delineation report within the airport industrial park. We looked at 50 acres, and compared to the local wetland inventory, there's a dramatic reduction in the number of wetlands compared to what we had projected in our local wetland inventory. So combined with the 17 or so wetland mitigation credits in our bank, areas on South Airport have, just south of where the primary development in the airport industrial park is, those areas will be much better positioned to see the types of investment and new construction that we're seeking.
And do those properties come with any kind of tax abatement?
They are currently not within a zone eligible for tax payment.
Okay.
Got a question. A little more than a month ago, as, I'm not sure if I'm Chair or Vice Chair of the Cascade West Act Committee on Transportation, and we got, there's an ODOT program for airports, ports, rail, and it's a competitive grant. I think there's $46 million in the whole state, and we got a proposal, I think Lisa Scherf wrote it, and something like $800,000 for runway improvements to hangars. Were you involved in that?
Yeah, I am closely involved with the other side of the airport. We manage the airport industrial park. Public Works manages the airport itself, so when folks want to build hangars, do a taxi lane expansion, I'm familiar with that project, and I work all the time with Lisa.
Okay, just a suggestion. I didn't know anything about it till I was at a meeting where it was going to be decided. This is a three-county act, and there were probably a dozen proposals, and this one wasn't as well done as some of the others, and didn't make the cut this time around. I think it's every two years, but I would have appreciated a heads up that this was in the works, and it just wasn't, wasn't as well done as some of the other proposals and didn't make the cut. And I think it was not for, I mean, it had merit, but the actual proposal didn't get people's attention, and it's very repetitive. So next time, do a better job, who's ever responsible for getting that information out, do a better job, and I think we could be successful.
Yeah, I will definitely speak with my colleagues at Public Works and work to notify the board about applications that are coming like that. I wasn't given that knowledge prior to the application being submitted, and about it following, wasn't involved in directly putting together that application. We are committed to communicating at a more regular cadence with the Board of Commissioners, and sometimes when you've got moving parts and multiple folks within different departments working within that airport area, that's an area that we could improve, so we'll do that.
Great, thank you.
Moving on to strategy number two. I talked about last time we were here, how we don't have a business registry this countywide. We've been able to make some substantial progress on that front. We've identified through county assessor records 2,112 commercial industrial parcels in the county. There's a breakdown of where those are generally located. Of those, we verified 10 to 15%, so email, phone number, number of employees. We also have records for 84 commercial industrial properties for lease or sale in the county out of 605 statewide. 51 of those 84 properties included building. 46 of the 51 are located in Corvallis, four in Philomath, one in Monroe, and one in Adair. Why am I telling you all this? It's to describe the inventory of buildings available. You would think with 51 vacant properties in the county, there should be plenty of opportunity for those looking to start or expand their business, or the vast majority of those locations are not zoned for industrial development or large enough to accommodate most site selection inquiries. Of those, only eight properties are located within industrial zones. Two of them are here on Research Way, which has changed dramatically over the last 20 years or so, and there's not much industrial activity actually happening. It's marketed much more as office space. So the other two of eight are on HP's campus. So we really are in a, I would say, a weak position when it comes to our building inventory meeting the needs of companies that want to start, expand, or relocate to our area. That's a primary constraint that we've identified. All right. Next, we're going to talk about business retention and expansion. One of the things that our office has done before is monitor touchpoints. I committed to you about three months ago that we were going to start monitoring outcomes and actually provide more information about what those BRE touchpoints entailed. That data is provided to you here in Table 2. As you can see, the Food Hub really dominated a lot of those touchpoints that required a great deal of collaboration within the community and the broader region. Grant or loan applications also tend to be a major reason for folks reaching out to us. Site selection, so a company wanting to be here in the county, business check-ins, the Business Right-Away Program, DCO is our downtown Corvallis organization, so about 7.5% were for those meetings. Other folks looking for incentive requests or seeking tenants. Small business development centers are really critical partners to our work, and so we make referrals there, and that represents just over 4% of those touchpoints. And this is a total of 111 touchpoints between when I got here in August and at the end of Quarter 4. So we exceeded the raw number that we had targeted, and this kind of shows a breakdown of what those were referring to, or what was the motivation for actually talking to those folks. We've spent a considerable time meeting with staff and companies at the Advanced Technology and Manufacturing Institute at HP and participating in the Corvallis Microfluidic Tech Hub. We recently welcomed Deputy Secretary Killingsworth from the EDA to talk about that microfluidic tech hub project. Anywhere from 60 to 80 hours have been spent navigating and supporting that important ecosystem over the last year. We continue to work on developing a countywide survey, but without a business registry, we're limited in our methods for distribution, so we expect it could take six to 12 months after the business registry is operating and populated with contact information. This is an area that I've been working, started working closely with the new Community Development Director at the county and her team to help us populate some of those fields. The business registry is kind of a linchpin that allows us to do a lot of other things once we have that put together.
I have a question there. In rural Benton County, an awful lot of the businesses are not necessarily on land that's zoned that way, they're home-based businesses. So is that, are you accessing that list through community development here?
That'll be a method that we use to capture the home-based businesses or businesses zoned in agriculturally zoned places. Right now, I think we have a good picture of the majority based on the county assessor records, but it definitely doesn't capture all of those home-based or agriculturally zoned businesses, and we recommend that as well.
Thank you.
So in November, the city of Corvallis is going to be looking to take a step up in the Main Street program to affiliated Main Street status. We're also looking to partner with communities like Monroe, Philomath, Adair Village, or Elsie about their participation in Main Street. There's currently rulemaking happening at the state level for rural communities to participate in the Main Street program. Traditionally, without a sizable downtown, it's been more difficult for those folks to participate. And with some of these new rulemaking, we'll have a real opportunity to engage around that possibility. I like to say economic development is a team sport. Speaking to that, we meet with folks very often. Corvallis Chamber of Commerce and Visit Corvallis, we meet in person monthly. Every quarter, we attend meetings from the Cascade West Council of Governments, Monroe Business Association, Philomath Chamber of Commerce, Tri-County Chamber of Commerce, Lynn Benton Small Business Development Center of Rain, and the Black Business Association of Oregon. So those are just a few of the partners that we're regularly in contact with. There's been some new developments on the Food Hub project that I wanted to share. We recently closed the grant application window with 10 applications total requesting about $1.7 million for the $495,000 that we have available in ARPA funding. We have a five-person selection committee that will meet in about a week or so. All of the applications have been provided to members of that selection committee. They'll be asked to individually score each of the projects. We'll come together, aggregate those scores, and then based on the evaluations, make grant award offers to those who are highest scoring. Any questions on that?
Not on that, but I'll come back to another question when you're done.
Okay, very good. All right. Oregon Prospector is the repository for all commercial and industrial properties. It's really where the state goes with site selection leads. We get about two dozen of those leads annually, so it's not a very rare occurrence. We also get about at least a dozen site selection leads annually from local partners. So making sure that Oregon Prospector is updated and has all the required information that folks are looking for when they want to develop is really important, and what we've been able to do over the last 12 months is to reduce the number of inactive properties and really bolster our record-keeping in Oregon Prospector by directly working with those property owners to fill in the gaps in information that have limited our ability to respond to site selection inquiries that come from the state or come from the local level. We continue to bring Business Oregon alongside us on every BRE visit where we think they could be useful and the resources offered by that organization would be useful. One such meeting occurred with a company called Biologic. One such meeting occurred with a company called Biologics, which is doing some really interesting work around protein development for cancer treatments. And there are some really interesting programs at the state level that we can access to help emerging technology businesses like Biologics grow. This is just one good success story. We attend conferences and events. One such conference, ALEDA, happened recently in downtown Corvallis. There, we learn about new and emerging best practices statewide and nationally. We budget annually for training to stay apprised of new programs and opportunities for Benton County. Some examples of where identifying best practices has helped informed recommendations for programs include our Food Hub project, the multi-unit property tax exemption program, changes to our mobile food unit ordinance, outdoor markets, the Business Right-Away Program, and then, of course, the Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy Program, which I mentioned before, and I think will be coming to the Board of Commissioners here once it's gone through review internally with staff at Benton County. All right, and so strategy number five, this is really around workforce development and housing, recognizing that we're a key partner in that work. One of the nice connections we've been able to make has been with Northwest Oregon Works and WorkSource. They are really well-equipped to help companies, namely a company like Lazarus 3D, find highly skilled labor that they can't find locally. They've helped them conduct a national search for that highly skilled labor. And last I heard, they were flying folks in to interview them. And those were identified through a referral made with Northwest Oregon Works and WorkSource. That is a majority of my updates, not all of them, but ones that I think are really most relevant. What I'm asking folks to do at the Economic Development Coalition, City Council, and Benton County Board of Commissioners, is to help us prioritize among these goals. This has come up before. This summary of implementation table is kind of an example of prioritization considerations you could use. We'll be doing a survey with all three public bodies to solicit your feedback about what priorities we should be taking up first, and maybe those which could happen down the road. The report also identifies a number of priority redevelopment sites. We talked about this area where wetland delineation study has been completed and where we hope to apply wetland mitigation credits. This is the area in South Corvallis where we have an enterprise, I apologize, an urban renewal district. That'll be especially relevant to this Food Hub project as we're able to leverage urban renewal dollars in addition to ARPA funding to try and meet more of that gap between the total ask and the total ARPA dollars available. And then the Sealy Building is one of the biggest industrial properties in the county. And we're working closely with that property owner to see folks take up tenant space in that enormous industrial property in Adair Village.
It could use a few murals.
I think it could. It's a, I'm not sure the architectural term, but the windows, there aren't many.
Brutalist.
Brutalist, that's it.
Brutalist architectural building.
At least paint some windows on that.
Yeah, fake windows might even help. Those are the updates I have for you. I wanted to be cognizant of the time available, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. The one question I did have, going back to Main Street and downtown, is the status of the downtown funds and the new downtown organization and what's happening in that arena?
Yeah.
Corvallis.
So what has happened is the chamber has transferred the remaining economic improvement dollars that they were holding on to following the dissolution of the DCA to the city. The city is establishing a process to transfer those dollars to a successor organization once they've developed a plan for how they want to spend the money. And they've met a few other requirements to demonstrate that they're an eligible organization, that they have nonprofit status, and the idea is that we would transfer the Main Street accreditation to them as well. So there, I work with them all the time, at least the one organization that has emerged. We don't want to make a conclusion that this is going to end up being the organization. There could be multiple organizations that do emerge and say, well, we're the successor to the DCA. Right now, there's primarily the DCO, which has many of the same members, and they have broad representation in downtown. So it's really looking that way, but there's some steps that need to be taken before that money can be transferred.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Couple. I appreciate the effort to spread your effort around the county. I think that's really critical to include as best we can, all the smaller communities that need help with economic development. Would you refresh my memory on who your team is at this point?
Yeah, Lily was with me, but she had a prior obligation. Lily Bender, she's previously with the Small Business Development Center. Bringing her onboard has really had a transformative effect on the Food Hub project in particular. She had connections with the Small Business Development Center that allowed us to enter into a partnership where they offered free support for folks looking to put together those grant applications. I think that greatly bolstered the quality of applications, the number of applications, and our ability to connect with the Spanish-speaking population in the county that we haven't always done the best job of engaging around these opportunities for public dollars. And so I think this has been a really great example of how a public process has developed trust within the community and really learned from previous efforts that have not always been so, so successful.
Okay, the last thing, and I'll continue to pester you about the low-income e-bike program that Kate Horsa did about three years ago, and hope that we can do round two of that project.
I am very supportive of it. It's just a matter of finding a funding mechanism to provide for those rebate dollars. We have a meeting coming up with, oh, who was the? The utility company that operates here, Pacific.
Pacific Power.
Let's say PG&E, but I know that's not it. Pacific Power, that's right.
Well, keep us posted. Thanks.
I just want to say thank you for coming and thank you for being patient with us as we got off track with our schedule today.
Oh, my pleasure. It's always good to be with you, and feel free to reach out to me anytime. I'll be in touch with the request for you to complete a survey to help us prioritize. And yeah, we'll talk soon.
One more thing on the airport. I know Benton County's talked about Corvallis, Benton County, how to get the county out of the airport land. What's the status of that effort?
With the annexation that will occur, and I'm looking forward to it very much because there have been some challenges between the different development code. The airport master plan for this area is inconsistent with the zones that are established in our comp plan and also the overlay with the county. So this will bring it all into alignment and help us better position ourselves in terms of land use policy. It's been a, it's been an impediment towards development, I would say. And so this is meant to address that.
Great, thank you. And that is my last question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to the prioritization exercise. Okay, next up, we have Benton County Facilities Update. Gary Stockoff.
Good morning, almost afternoon, commissioners. It's good to be here. I will try to be brief with the updates. Things are happening, but some of them are still moving along at a glacial pace. So I'll start with the Crisis Center because I wanted to share, we shared a picture earlier or late last week, I think. Paul was very proud of that. The slab is being put down at the Crisis Center. Though soon you'll see walls going vertical, and that is great news. I was looking back because one thing we're doing right now is we're going to be approaching BP, the original owner of the station, to see if we can maybe recoup some of the costs for how much it's cost us to remediate the site beyond what we've already spent. And so Vance has been helpful with that, and I've got some information. But it has basically cost us a year to deal with all that and to get it to a point where everybody's bought off on that. But again, we're finally underway, and thanks to Gerting for being patient. Everybody else is, we're finally getting underway with that. We've also retained on that one PBS, our environmental consultant, to help with finishing the National Environmental Policy Act component that's related to the HERSA money. I wish I knew what HERSA did, and I think our health folks would probably tell us that's a funding component of the Crisis Center. So I think that's about done. They will submit that on up the line for review and approval, and hopefully we can get that resolved on that part of the funding. And then, again, I mentioned the fact that we had the BP settlement, and we'll be pursuing that a little bit more here once I get a time to get some things caught up with, and also finalize exactly what the final cost is that we've heard. So any questions on the Crisis Center?
At this point, we're, the budget's pretty well-balanced in theory.
That is correct. Is Rick shaking his head?
I saw two thumbs up from Rick in the back.
He's really excited back there.
Notice he stayed back there. Yeah, we're still spot on with it. You know, I mean, I think this HERSA thing is the last thing that has to be figured out, but I think we've been very clear about this from a while ago, that this just needs to be built. And we have invested a lot of money already, and the need is there. So we are pursuing proceeding with construction. And the funding that we would get from HERSA would be basically the last chunk of money that we would use to finish the project, but it will be finished. And of course, our folks in health, they've got, is ready to go and operationally make it all work, which will be a big lift as it, for them as well, to figure out how we're going to make that all work. It's pretty dynamic to see how it would come to play. Moving to the courthouse, couple things. We have redone the memorandum of understanding between the Corps and State Historic Preservation Office, so ship bow in the Corps. We feel the Corps is right there with us, and really is ship bow, just accepting the mitigation measures that we've already proposed and clarifying one. But clearly, that has, that agreement has to be finalized and then signed off by both State Historic Preservation folks and then Colonel somewhere, some Corps office up. So we might have to send somebody out to track that person down, but hopefully, you know, we're in the, we're still moving it along with hopes that that will be resolved before the end of this month.
And that means we're waiting to start actual construction until?
We're still tracking September-ish to actually be underway because the city needs that permit for release their final permits. There's a couple permits that we're still working with, with the city to get them resolved and put to bed, but it's all kind of one big thing that comes together. But if everything's ready with the city, they can't release it until we get this one from the Corps of Engineers. So it's all kind of tied together. We are still waiting for a signed executed copy of the MFA agreement with the state. Correct, Mr. Crony? Yeah, yeah, or an electronic one either. And then we're also still working on the FASE agreement, which is really getting more into the details of how everybody's going to share costs. We think there's a draft coming maybe on it. So, but we, I will say, we, the county, have been very proactive in trying to stay in front of that and get these things resolved as soon as we can. So those are still in the process. And then the last one is, we are now getting ready to plat the actual parcel in the road for the site, which is another requirement of the city that it has to have final plat. In theory, the laws exist because the courts created them as part of the judgment. There's some other hoops we have to jump through so that the city can check the box and move on. So there's a couple of moving parts here, but we are moving there. The good news is the budget's still there. Hoffman is getting bids in from their subcontractors and trade partners. The good news is costs haven't gone up. So really, things have kind of stabilized. They've had some good competition with some of their trade partners. And so if it's a little higher here, it's coming in a little lower there, and it's still right there where we need to be on the cost. So that is the good news. A year ago, that was some tough sledding because we weren't sure when the costs were going to start leveling out. So that's the update on the courthouse.
I think we ought to have a serious groundbreaking ceremony when we get started.
I think that once we get some folks out there and some equipment out there, and we will look to do that, yeah. And, you know, I'm one that I like the rain, so I look forward to when it starts to kind of get ready to return. But I think this year, we're going to hope for an Indian summer a little bit, so we can get underway on the project and have things last a little bit longer. We shall see. But again, we have provisions or means to work in the winter. Just might make the cost a little bit more, but we will get underway. And then the EOC, we are still trying to get through design development. And as soon as that is done, then we'll proceed into preparing the construction plans. It'll be submitted to the county for review and approval, and then that permit would be issued as well. It will probably start in the spring. But as I mentioned before, both these projects are scheduled to come across the finish line in late spring, early summer of 2026, which is pretty much the schedule we've maintained for a while. And it is also on budget. Those are the three projects.
Any update on the Monroe Clinic sighting?
Monroe Clinic thing. We have Paul sat down with Health, and they narrowed down a configuration, kind of come up with a square footage, and then would that work for them? And they have come up with a kind of a tentative design at about 3,000 square feet. So at this point in time, we are looking at the extra funding that would be needed to facilitate that, which I think is $1,002,000 to $1,004,000. And if that's good, given a go, then the next step would be, we would need to retain an architect to do some concept plans so that we can have those available along with the NEPA, Environmental Policy Act, information that we've already initiated, and then submit to the USDA, who are the administrators of that grant. So we're in process, and Paul's working closely with Health to finalize at least the tentative look of what that would look like.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
And I'll sit here because I think the next item after it's in is mine.
I think the next item up is actually our consent calendar. And then we are going to shift an item up on new business and put April Holland before you.
It's okay, April. Your health center went to 2,000 square feet, that's all.
She promises to be fast.
We, we like her, Gary. We like her better, Gary.
Okay, so consent calendar contains minutes. I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, signify. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's done. So April, the floor is yours. Looking for approval to apply for one-time funding for Coordinated Homelessness Response Office.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Gary, and others for, thank you, Commissioners, for moving this item up a bit. I've got another commitment in a couple of minutes here. So yeah, today I'm, I'm here to request support for two one-time funding opportunities in support of the Coordinated Homeless Response Office's Flexible Housing Subsidy Pool Program, which you've heard a lot about and a lot continues to move quickly. I'll just share that both of these one-time opportunities are not departures from the work already planned or in, in motion with the Flexible Housing Subsidy Pool. However, it's, it's, it's a way to have more flexible funding at hand, much like the, the last request that, that we brought before you for another IHN grant, the Capacity Building Grant. So the, the first opportunity is through the IHN DST, the Delivery System Transfer, Transformation Grant. Our application through the Coordinated Homeless Response Office intends to propose a landlord engagement and incentive initiative as an arm of the Flexible Housing Subsidy Pool Program. The goal is to recruit private property owners, owners and property managers as part of our overarching response. We're looking at development of innovative contracts that help incentivize property managers to participate through tenancy supports, provision of consistent reliable payments, facilitation and guarantees through the Oregon Landlord Guarantee Program, and assistance with various additional resources, including contracted after-hours case management support for tenants and landlords. So the, the Flex Pool is a central point of contact for property owners and managers, and this work is already in, in motion now. Our ask through the IHN DST program is to help fund this new initiative by paying for portions of our two limited duration crow staff, the coordinator and housing navigator, as well as some funds for outreach and education, the landlord engagement forums, and to dedicate some funds to communications and campaign to spread awareness. The DST pilots can last 12 to 24 months. The contracts that are expected to be executed in January 2025, and the funds would need to be distributed by the end of 2025. Again, this is, is all one-time funding work that we would, we are undertaking or beginning to, to develop and undertake. And this award would help us have more flexible funding for rapid rehousing. Would you like me to move to the second one? Okay, thanks. The, the second opportunity is from the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. It's tied into way back a couple of years ago with the, with Governor's Executive Order on Homelessness and the balance of state funding that we received through HP 5019. There was a, some subsequent funding called the Oregon Rehousing Initiative. This is a set aside of that Oregon Rehousing Initiative, or ORI, being marketed as, as a pilot called Housing 360. And so Housing 360 is really focused in on housing, specifically people with behavioral health needs as well. And so the goals are to improve housing and behavioral health incomes for people with a behavioral health diagnosis who are homeless, living unsheltered, and to reduce racial disparities among that population. We feel like the, the Crow isn't a really good place to, to seek this pilot funding because it ties right in with the work that, that we're building now. While this is a one-time pilot, you know, a key component of Oregon Housing Community Services of, of this pilot will be the monitoring and reporting to incorporate into potential future programs and strategies. So as the, the Coordinated Office has been working to understand the existing behavioral health, health, housing programs that currently exist and to, to have some more seamless integration and coordination there, we feel like we'd be competitive, although there, there won't be just three or four awards statewide. We feel like we've got a, a good chance of doing some really good work.
Just curious, it seems like you folks come before us on a regular basis with projects like this. Who writes the grants, tracks the grants? Or is that a complicated question?
We, we are fortunate to have a contracted researcher and grant writer on staff with the Coordinated Office. It's not a full-time position, but Libby Lowsky-Winter does a, a lot of the legwork on, on the grant writing and research pieces. Of course, our project manager Rebecca Taylor, as well as our coordinator, Julie Arena are heavily involved, and they undertake everything very collaboratively, seeking partner, internal and, and partner support every step along the way.
Thank you.
I'm happy to make a motion unless you have a question. Okay, I move to approve the request from the Health Department to apply for the IHN CCO DST grant and the OHCS Housing 360 Pilot Initiative.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to the initiation of proceedings to transfer jurisdiction of County Road D 20, let's see, Northwest Gibson Hill Road, City of Albany.
Oh, skipping the water.
I did skip one. You're right. You're right. You're right. Nope, going backwards to Gary Stockoff. Modification of deposit requirements for Alsea Service District Water Users.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mary Lee's here with me to talk about all the, the technical money stuff. But this is a request that's been in the works for a bit to modify the collection of deposits for Alsea Water. Back in the day, 2013, to be exact, the bylaws were not modified out there that require that a deposit be collected for renters. And that hasn't, it, it hasn't really worked, and it's been a real nightmare to track. So Finance has requested, and I think we support just to clean it up, to go back to where those deposits go. Where Vance suggested that we actually attach the list of folks that we do refunds. And so that is attached for your information. And then if you have any questions on that side of things, then Mary Lee's there. But we would request that the order be approved.
This is a rare occasion when we're giving money back. It sounds like it's just more of a hassle to manage than it's worth. That's the bottom line.
Yes, we're having difficulties as renters move out. You know, they have no need to notify us that they're, that they've left. And so it's very difficult for our finance department to track them down, to give them their money back. We've had to eschew money to the state, so they have to know to go out and find it. And so what, what happens is that there's often a bill that's due when they leave as well. And at that point in time, we're turning it over to the landlord. So we feel like really the landlord is the best person to manage this process.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to adopt Order D 2024 Day 049.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye. 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 Thank you very much. That was very rapid. Good luck finding all those people. Okay. Okay, now we're moving on to the Gibson Hill Road transfer initiation process. And you don't look like Laurel, but I'm sure you are today.
Yes, I am. Laurel's off on a well-deserved vacation, so she asked that I sit in on this item. And again, this is an item that's been in the works for a long time. Between the agreement that we had with Albany, we completed Gibson Hill a couple of years ago, and we're finally now into the process of initiating the road transfer. So this is the official request to do so. The order initiates it and then also sets the public hearing for September 3rd, 2024. Albany will be doing a parallel process, and at the end of it, Gibson Hill would then become the City of Albany, which is yay for us. We did do the improvements to bring it up to their standards, so that was really the, the critical part of having that done.
Any questions?
I do have one question. Gary, several years ago, there was a list of these roads in North Albany and the schedule for when they were going to be transferred over to, to Albany, once we brought them up to standard. Do you know how far we are through that list?
I think Gibson Hill.
Yeah, this is the last one?
No, I don't know if it's the last one, but I think there's still others that are there. But obviously, funding becomes an issue.
Sure.
To take care of those roads to bring them up to standard. But Gibson Hill was really, I think, the, the big one in the group that wanted it to be done, yeah.
Thanks.
It would be great to see that list again, just to know where we are.
I will get, I will have Laurel get that.
And I know we do not have such an agreement with the City of Corvallis, but it would still be wonderful to develop that sort of an agreement with the City of Corvallis since we have several roads that might fit better in their infrastructure than ours. Ready?
Oh, boy. I move to adopt Order Number D 2024 Day 051 in the matter of initiating proceedings to transfer jurisdiction of the following county road to the City of Albany, Oregon. Northwest Gibson Hill Road, County Road Number 04910, and setting a public hearing date for September 3rd, 2024.
Second. All in favor, please indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have our public health folks who have been waiting very patiently all morning regarding a statement of support regarding flavored tobacco restrictions in order to promote youth nicotine addiction prevention.
Can I push the button?
Yes. Yeah.
How are you, Commissioners? Good morning.
Good morning. And you may want to introduce yourselves as well.
Yes. I'm Andy Shannard. I'm the Benton County Health Department Tobacco Prevention Coordinator. I'm joined by my manager, Rosio Munoz, and my director, Sarah Hartstein. Thank you again for this time on the agenda, and I'm aware of time, so we'll just get right into it. As you may recall, we met earlier this year in May at the joint update of the community health centers in the Benton County Health Department. And at that meeting, we presented an update on tobacco prevention efforts, our administration of the tobacco retail license, and the current landscape of nicotine products and their impact on youth addiction. A new generation of kids and youth have become addicted to nicotine by way of vaping and flavored tobacco products. These new products are cheap, contain extremely high nicotine content, and are marketed in appealing flavors like fruit punch and cotton candy. Developing adolescent brains are far more susceptible to the impact of nicotine addiction and can be impacted severely, exacerbating mental health challenges like anxiety, learning, and depression. Data shows that users of these flavored tobacco products are overwhelmingly young people. Over two-thirds of Oregon youth who use tobacco use flavored products compared to one-quarter of older adults who use tobacco. And the Oregon Legislature is planning a bill designed to ban the sale of flavored tobacco in 2025. Local and regional support would bolster their efforts statewide. So in closing, thank you, Commissioners, for considering Resolution R 2024-022 in the matter of supporting ending the sale of flavored tobacco.
Any questions? Discussion?
Motion? Just a quick comment. This reminds me a while back, wine coolers. You know, okay, you, you can't handle straight wine. We'll sweeten it up. Get you introduced that way, and manufacturers seem like they're quite clever at figuring out ways to expand their sales. But I'd be glad to make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution Number R 2024 Day 022, declaring the Board of Commissioners' support for the restriction of flavored tobacco products.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we are now at the end of our regularly scheduled agenda. And are there any other items for the good of the order or any announcements?
Oh, I've got one. This appeared in my office recent, this poster appeared in my office recently, and I think it's very well done and hope to see it spread around the county.
The poster is of all of our Benton County parks and natural areas, and it does a great job just giving an enticing overview of all of the wonderful places to recreate around the county.
One comment, maybe next time I have a map of that. So easier to, for people to find some of these wonderful natural areas.
And a QR code to take them to the website. We can think of all kinds of good suggestions. Okay, thank you for a long but productive meeting. We are adjourned.